That was fantastic.
And then next, we also get to congratulate our retirees. Thank you to everyone who is joining us this evening, both in person and online. We're grateful for your participation. And if I could, please ask everyone to stand
Yes. Quite on that other end of the spectrum. Ones graduating and starting a new life and
for the Pledge of Allegiance.
those moving on to a new chapter and hopefully some rest and enjoyment. Michelle did another
The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under
video for us on our retirees. We have over 400 years of experience that graduated.
God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a quick amendment to our agenda board on our action items. Action D, approved land surveying services contract with AKS Engineering and Forestry. We don't currently, we're not in receipt of all the documents needed to review and make that decision this evening. So I'm asking for a motion to postpone that and remove it from the agenda.
I'll motion to remove the land, the land survey service contract from the agenda.
I'll second. Is there any discussion questions from the board? Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Reese, aye.
Director Humpman?
Aye.
Director Spro?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Canchola?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So first on our agenda, we have recognition, recognition and good news about our Oregon City Schools and our first item, Melissa Berg.
Good evening, everyone. Kane, do you want to come up? This is Jesse's dad. Yeah. And I can sit with you too, if you want. This is Kane, Jesse's dad, who is one of our students and I have a little thing. So he, Jesse is a student who's known for his positive positivity and perseverance and recently was surprised by KPTV's surprise squad with a fully paid trip to Disneyland for his family. And also donated money to the school, which will go to Unified Sports. And additionally, the class of 2025 received the Cup of Kindness Award, recognizing their leadership to commitment to creating an inclusive and supportive school culture. And so we have a little video that we're going to share.
An Oregon City High School senior and special needs student is coming back from a very scary event. Jesse DeLene suffered a cardiac event in March and spent several weeks fighting for his life.
Classmates in his community have rallied for his recovery, prompting the Fox 12 Surprise Squad and our friends from Les Schwab to pull off our biggest surprise ever. And it's a night Jesse and Oregon City High School will likely never forget.
He went to sleep just like any other night. His brother, Skylar, actually woke us up and says Jesse's not breathing right. So my husband woke up, went and checked on him. Jesse wasn't breathing. His organs started to fail. We didn't know if Jesse was gonna walk again, if he was gonna be on life support. Everybody rallied around and supported us. It was very amazing because I didn't truly understand just how many friends he had. I knew that he was very popular at the school, but then they had shirts made for him that said Jesse Strong. He's doing amazing. Yeah, he's recovering so well and it blows us away.
We are headed to Oregon City High School right now in a limousine to pick up Jesse and his friends for prom. It's gonna be a very exciting night. Hello, I am looking for Jesse. I'm Kimberly Moss with the Fox 12 Surprise Squad. How are you?
Good.
Are you excited for tonight?
Yeah.
Well, guess what? You have a big night ahead, your prom royalty.
Yeah.
And you're gonna do it in style. What do you think?
Do you know that?
Are you ready to go to prom in a limousine?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Let's do it. All your classmates are here to see you. Go have fun, bud!
Jesse's one of like the happiest people you know, I mean, like he's... He's always smiling. He's always having a good time.
He's just a blessing to our school. Like when you're in a bad mood, he'll like make you happy.
He's so happy. He's so outgoing. And everyone, like, that's why everyone loves him is because he's such a happy kid.
He brings up people's days. He's always smiling. And he compliments people.
Make some noise for Kimberly Moss from Fox 12 Oregon.
We heard an incredible story about one of your fellow students, this guy Jesse. We are so impressed with all you have done to lift him up through the traumatic event that he went through in the past month. He is having an amazing night because of all of you. At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Timmons to come over. We would like to honor you and your school with the first ever Fox 12 Surprise Squad Cup of Kindness. I would like to invite Dorian Moore.
We are here to issue a check, proud to give it, for $5,000. This is to help support and further your effort for inclusion.
We're not done yet. This is a box for you that I want you to open. Can you put those on your head? They're going to Disneyland!
Kim, I can't even believe the reaction we got from that crowd. There's what, 1,000, 2,000 just pumped up teenagers, all supporting Jesse. Jesse Strong, you know, like they're saying. And it's just, what a reaction. And what a community. Everybody came together. What a night.
What do you think of this night?
I love it.
And everybody loves you. Yeah.
He's so happy, yeah. And he lives life to his fullest. You just want that for any kid, but especially for kids like Jesse. And we have that here, especially at Oregon City High School.
Oh, it's hard for my voice not to crack. Like, talk about this. This is so emotional. I've got to tell you, that school is just amazing. Les Schwab giving $5,000 to their inclusivity program. They really worked to create a safe and inclusive environment for their students. So that was really huge.
Well, you see the results of their work with that and the support that those kids have for Jesse and each other.
And then when we told Jesse's family, the whole family is going to Disneyland, not just Jesse. And they were so appreciative because they said they couldn't afford to do it on their own. So the whole family gets to celebrate Jesse in a really special place.
And you know, his parents have been through a lot, I'm sure, through the course of his life. And what a nice way to acknowledge their efforts.
Just, I gotta tell you, everybody at Oregon City High School, you're amazing. Truly amazing.
Well, Kim, I talked to you after that shoot and she was, you were glowing and raving about the kids and the school and the staff and everybody. Yeah. And Jesse.
And a real quick shout out to Jake's limousine service. They provided the limousine for Jesse and the kids that night. So just, yeah, really special.
The thing that jumped out to me is when you were talking about him, he was high fiving people. He was acknowledging them. And it wasn't just about him. So anyways.
Imagine being on a vacation for a very long time. Now imagine saving money nightly while you do it. Sounds pretty great, right? With Verbo's Long Stay.
I'm glad it wasn't some inappropriate ad.
So Kane, thank you for sharing Jesse with us. And everyone loves him. And what, a special thing for our, our program to be more inclusive, where we're really trying to work towards that. And I really appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I would just be curious, kind of some of the things that are examples of ways that you feel Jesse has been included, just, just through different activities or the way that classes go?
I'll try not to be long, but it, you know, he's been through the Oregon City School District since he was in preschool. He started at Jackson Campus. He's never not been included in anything since he's been in school in Oregon City. He's played sports. He's been involved with choir, you know, starting in middle school, he started choir. He's done, done it every year since, you know, graduated with the choir this year. Student Council, he was included with that. Unified Sports, half of his classes are in, you know, the regular, regular population. You know, he's, you know, fortunately, he's never not been included in the school district. And we do have friends in other school districts around the, you know, everywhere. And it's not like that everywhere. It's real special here. But I don't know, I don't know if I answered that perfectly, but it's hard because he's never not been included.
That was great. Yeah. Thank you.
Grateful. Any other questions or comments?
I just got, when I watched that, somebody sent that to me. And I'm from Oregon City. I went to this is high school, I went to school here. And it just, we, we always had that in our school. The Jessies that were in our sports programs, they're managers, they were, you know, Cool Rob is still around. If you see Cool Rob, he's at the games and stuff. And, and I think that's something special in our community. That's been passed down from kind of generation. We want to include everybody in what we're doing. And there's a place for everybody in our community. I love that. And shout out to Les Schwab. I know Dorian and his guys always give to our community and our sports programs and Unified. And that was super awesome to see him up there presenting that check to, for the inclusivity part of the school because they do so much for our community. So shout out to those guys at Les Schwab.
I do have one more thing that I left out to continue with your question is Jesse was an honorary player on the varsity soccer team for two years. And that was one of the biggest blessings, I think, that he could have been given because that soccer team is a family. Coach Mike of Ario has done, I think he stepped down this year, fortunately, but he's done an amazing job with that program and those young men. I have, you know, videos and memories of Jesse running around the field with them, a full lap around the football field. And I would stop him or try to stop him to do the second one because he has cerebral palsy. But he wanted to keep going. And when the team finished, instead of going about their business, they started clapping and they started going to him and they ran with him. Every practice, every, you know, he went to every games, got his names announced. When Jesse was sick in the hospital, the varsity and JV coaches were some of the first to come. When he got sent to Randall and he was in physical therapy, a handful of varsity soccer players came. And the special thing was they, you know, they're all teenagers, juniors, seniors, they drove themselves, you know. And we see him, the students, the soccer players, we see him at the stores, we see the sport events, they're always coming to say hi to Jesse. You know, with the choir, I was always afraid, you know, we were always kind of afraid because of Jesse's vulnerability to, you know, let him go. And it started with, you know, being in class in the school district, you know, the teacher's giving him a little freedom. And then, you know, our heart stops a little bit, but okay, he's okay. He's doing good. And then we started having the choir events. We would leave, you know, he would just go with, you know, 200 kids and he was, you know, he's always safe. And then it got to the point where I can drop Jesse off at school and he can, he can just go do his thing, go to whatever class he is. I'm not worried about his safety. I'm not worried about him being bullied. And because I know that those soccer players, I know that those students, you know, they're all looking out for him. And so, yeah, that's all I got with that.
Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We're so grateful to have you and your family and our community. And this was a beautiful opportunity to celebrate Jesse. And we're grateful to have him in our community. So thank you so much for sharing him with us.
I appreciate y'all and the work you do in the special needs education system that we have set up in Oregon City. Because like I said, it's not like that everywhere. And he excelled so much through it every single year. And for a kid to go that long through school and not have anything negative to say, I think that's pretty cool. So good job to y'all. And, you know, keep it up.
Thank you.
You know, you know, I coached Special Olympics. So, you know, I got a lot of young ones that are be going through the program still. So they need it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I believe Michelle has made a lovely little video for you about graduation. This year, we had 494 graduates from Oregon City High School, 25 from Ochsla and 24 from Case. And also at ACA, we had 28. So we had 543 here in Oregon City and 28 from ACA. And some of those students are our local students and some just choose ACA, which is awesome. So we have quite a few kiddos. We had 36 kids earn their bilingual seal and two of them also earned their multilingual seal. Two Ford Scholars, we had 46 honor grads. Like, it's an impressive group. We have a night of excellence that the high school does, which is amazing. It's a very big class. And Mr. Timmons and the team were able to kind of squeeze it in in two hours. But there's so much to be proud of and to celebrate with them. And it was a great weekend. Thank you to the board members who came. I think everybody attended, except Pamela and Mr. Canchola, because he had other duties, getting his son married off, which is a really good excuse. But special thank you to Katie who came to Case, Ochsla and OCHS, which was wonderful to see you there. And we also had three students graduate from our 21 program, so our Bridges to Independence, which is a kick of a celebration. So if you ever get to go, please do. Because not only do they get to talk about their journey and their dreams, but they always do a performance of their own they create. So that was a great celebration as well. All right. And I think we're gonna watch a little video about it. All right, and I think we're going to watch a little video about it.
That was fantastic. Thank you. And then next, we also get to congratulate our retirees.
Yes, quite on that other end of the spectrum. Ones graduating and starting a new life and those moving on to a new chapter and hopefully some rest and enjoyment. Michelle did another video for us on our retirees. We have over 400 years of experience that graduated in May, so we'd like to honor those folks with that video. Oh, there's no video? Okay, yay.
So, but tonight is just about one of you, okay? So, in my opinion, there's two different kinds of people that volunteer for stuff. There's people that do it for the wrong reasons and there's people that do it for the right. In this case, your school board members, your administrators, you better be here for the right reason. And that's the kids, right? It's not about personal agendas, it's not about any of that, it's about the little ones running around. I don't want to really follow the video that went first because that, like, I'm a Marine, I don't cry, but that, that came close, right? But that's what it's about. I mean, when I can sit back there tough as nails and almost shed a tear over that, that tells you exactly what the importance of your roles are. So, I thank each and every one of you. Everyone knows, everyone that knows Director Hayes, that's got a ring to it, you know that she's, she doesn't mind speaking her mind and she doesn't mind you hearing it. Her friends call her Bold Print, okay? There's a reason for that. But along with that, her friends also know there's very few people in this world that put kids on a pedestal higher than her, whether it be her own or whether it be all of yours or the community. And she proves that through her actions every day. She may not sugarcoat what she says, but what she says is for the right reasons. She will always advocate for kids, I know my wife, she will always advocate for kids, no matter who they are or where they're at, especially the ones in our community. You will probably hear Bold Print in an email at some point down the road, I can almost guarantee that. Look, elected officials, no matter who you're talking about, they, they very seldom overachieve, let's be honest, we're all disappointed in who we elect sometimes, right? However, I can attest that this woman spent every waking moment that she had devoted to this job when it was necessary. The concentration that she would put into certain things, to the point where like, you know, as a husband, you're like, seriously, do you really have to read through that right now, like, you're good movie on, right? But that's the level it takes and I get that, right, for all of you. With that being said, I just want to close by saying, Director Hayes, or my wife, or Debs, whatever you want to call her, on behalf of myself, our family and all of the kids in our community, I would like to say thank you for being you. And by the way, you get Monday Night Football back.
The games haven't been that good, so, I mean, they're, they're good. And, you know, I watch them after our board meetings. I just want to, and maybe I'll say it later on, brain's a little fried, been a little emotional the last couple of days, but 100% appreciate your volunteering in the community. And we had, I said I was going to run and you're like, we were just chatting in football meeting and said, I might think about that. And I go, that'd be cool. And here, here, here we are. Yeah, so you get Monday Night Football and I don't. So, but you, you can text me the scores. Okay. I appreciate you.
You have grown children, I don't. So, it's not just Monday Night Footballs, it's actually spending time with the kids as well, so.
Well, thank you, Deb. Go ahead, Michelle.
Well, I met you when we ran for office.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm really going to miss you. But thank you for always being there.
Yeah.
And thank you for showing up and doing the hard work. And I wish you a very happy retirement.
Almost there. I'm old enough, I'm almost there.
Yes, please do.
I just want to thank you, Debbie, for your service. I have always appreciated our conversations. I think you make me a better leader because of the questions that you ask and the information you share. And you're wicked smart. You just, you do your research, you know budgets, I just have always really enjoyed our conversations and I'm thankful you'll still be leading in the community and I hope that you still reach out. And you shared, you shared the other day that your son graduates in four years, so perhaps you could just come back to the school board sometime, but I, I thank you for your service and your dedication and I 100% agree with your husband, you are always, always, always about kids and that speaks in everything you do and say, so thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
Nope.
Okay. Well, Deb, that's a, that's a first.
Actually, no, I know. No, I will. It has been a very trying four years, you know, we, we came into the board four years ago, you know, with a mission to open the schools and get our kids back to learning and the amount of learning loss that has happened during COVID and the times that happened, it's just, it's so sad to see the effects that it's had on the kids and I'm so happy that we did what we needed to do back in the day to get that going. I know that we came in and there was a lot of people that did not agree with us being on the board and I, I just want to remind people that, you know, this is a nonpartisan position, regardless of your politics and whatever your beliefs are, this is a nonpartisan position. And one of the reasons why I ran is because it's about the kids, 100% about the kids. And there's a fine line between advocacy and activism. And when you don't have that fine line that defines who you're, what you're doing it for, you know, things get muddy and things get blurred and tempers flare and anger takes the better of you. And the only, at the end of the day, the only thing that suffers is the kids. And I think that when you, when you actually take a step back and just stop thinking about everything that's going on in the world and the elections that have happened that you don't agree with or the state of where we're at as a country, the only way to make it better is to raise these kids the most protected that we can and give them everything that we can to be better people, better leaders, and just bring this community back together. I mean, obviously, you know, with Jesse's dad here saying that our, our schools are some of the best that he's ever experienced and he's always felt included, we need to do that for everybody. It's not just certain people that you feel that you're advocating for, it's everybody all together. And I think that when you take a step back and realize that, yes, it's okay to fight for what you believe in, but it's also okay to listen to everybody else, I think that we all become better people.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks again, Deb. Moving on to focus on communities, our students in community, we have Dr. Crane.
I'm going to not make us cry. That's going to be my goal right now, right? There's this, what a night. I, for real. Typically, our schools, as you know, come up and present something about whatever heritage celebrations are going on for the month and if they're not available, then our belonging administrator, Deanna, comes. And it's so weird, this is like a really busy week apparently at schools. And so, they kind of said, you know, Sarah, if you could just do it, that'd be great. So, I am excited to share with you what they're doing in schools with, there are several heritage celebrations this month. So, the first one is National Caribbean American Heritage Month. And Deanna wrote me notes, wasn't that nice of her? She might have been worried I was going to mess it up. So, the other thing that goes along with this is National Immigrant Heritage Month. And so, these are both opportunities for us to really appreciate and learn about all of our cultures around us. And of course, it aligns with our district's values to, to do these celebrations. The next one we have is Juneteenth, which of course is June 19th, and we wanted to really highlight something that's happening at the city that looks like a lot of fun. And Juneteenth is the celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. And so, on Saturday, June 21st, which is not Juneteenth, by the way, that's two days later, just for the record, don't go on the 19th, but there'll be a good event at the city at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. Is that how you say that? End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, okay. And then our students who are in the BSU will be there as well, so that's exciting. The other thing that we have this month is Oregon ODE Pride Month. And so, we have a lot of things that we can do to celebrate that and celebrate the history in our schools. And we have, there's some, there's some interesting stats on here that I'm going to look up here to see, but it's just important to know that we do know nationally that 61% of our LGBTQ+ students report being bullied and 47% of transgender students report that. And that, actually, I said nation, but that's actually Oregon stats too, they take a survey every year and so those are self-reported. So, it's why it's important, you know, it, it does go back to just our focus on ensuring that every student feels included and feels like they belong. And kind of to Debbie's point, regardless of all the things you think in your world and all the people you love, it's our job just to celebrate kids wherever they are and whoever they are and that's a pretty exciting job that we have. If you could go to the next thing, I meant to say this now, but anyway, so we do have guidance from the state and from other organizations that help us know the things to do. And then the last slide is just a reminder of our, what we've been talking about, which is robust systems of belonging and well-being. It feels like that's kind of what we're celebrating tonight and this goes right in that theme. So, I wanted to just read, "We'll prioritize the well-being and sense of belonging in safe spaces for all students and staff by cultivating student voice and implementing evidence-based wellness strategies to reduce and respond to bullying, harassment, discrimination and other forms of exclusion." And again, it just feels like the perfect night to do that when we started the night by focusing on inclusion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Awesome. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda, we have the superintendent's report. What have you got for us, Deb?
All right, I have about three things I want to chat about. So, first, legislative and budget update. So, at the legislative landscape, the Accountability Bill, Governor's Accountability Bill did pass. We know it's the same accountability measures and adding on K-2 attendance and eighth grade math. And then we also get to choose one, there will be a short list as they develop rules about that, but we've already been leaning in and learning about that and that's already something we're talking about. So, that is rolling and we look forward to some guidance, including some clarifications around the assessments that we can choose from in terms of monitoring our students' performance moving forward. And Dr. Crane and her team has already been looking at some of them that are used throughout our state to see which one might be the best for us. We currently use STAR. MAP is also one that is frequently used and that's one that we're seriously investigating. Regarding budget, we don't have much new news, although we did hear that the student investment account and the high school success might get a haircut. Not exactly sure what level, Mike's haircut or Debbie's haircut, I don't know. We'll see what kind of haircut that is, but that's something that we're kind of watching. We know that grant funding changes from now until October, so it's just something we're attending to. The end of the month signifies the closing of our legislature, so any bills that are to be approved or not approved will be tied up by the end of the month. Heat Index, we've had a couple of people, today was kind of a warm day, had some people ask questions about closures, heat, how we respond to heat. We have some guidance under inclement weather on our webpage, but basically, we use tools including OSAA's guidance for heat as well as the National Weather Heat Index to kind of inform our decisions. Today was hot. We were all out in schools at the end of the day just to check in on people and to feel the spaces. We're really excited for AC in our elementary schools moving forward, but it, it really does come down to how many days is it hot, are buildings, temperatures dropping in the evening, is air moving? And luckily, tomorrow will be cooler and in many of our elementary schools, it's field day, so they're going to be outside anyway, so wear sunscreen, everyone, wear sunscreen. Lots of celebrations and recognitions have been happening. Thank you again to many of you who were able to come to our evening events and there's just so much to celebrate at the end of the year. Eighth grade recognition and Mr. Timmons was at this evening, we've had Kinder recognitions, just a lot of amazing things. And I just also want to take a minute to recognize Mr. Michael Sweetin, who is leaving for a new adventure and we just want to thank him for his over 25 years of service to our district as a teacher and principal. And Director of Operations and just really want to appreciate his work and his efforts. And I know I need to find people with deep history and wisdom because I'm perpetually like, Michael, what do you know about this? So, I will miss him, so best of luck to you.
Thank you. And thank you, Michael. Next is patron input. It's my understanding we have someone joining us online?
We do.
You have one electronic one that was submitted, which you should have a copy of. We have one person on Zoom.
Okay.
And then we have one person present in this space.
Should we start with Zoom?
Sure. The Zoom patron, his name is Sean Winter. And I will go ahead and read the requirements before we have him speak.
Thank you, Lisa.
The Oregon City School District Board of Education highly values public input in making important decisions that affect Oregon City's children and community. To ensure the public has an opportunity to offer comments during school board meetings and to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of the district, speakers must observe certain basic rules of conduct. The following guidelines apply to all public comment. All members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. No hate speech, no hate speech is allowed. Individuals are not permitted to engage in conduct that interferes with the ability of other individuals to observe the board meetings, interferes with the ability of other members of the public to offer comments to the board, or interferes with the ability of the board to conduct its business. Members of the public may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning specific school personnel or other authorized individuals. Complaints of this nature shall be addressed through Public Complaints Policy KL-AR. Please keep your comments concise, as you will have three minutes to speak. You will receive a one-minute warning from Melissa Burke. Please be aware that the board will not be responding to your comments. It is the time, this is a time for them to listen. And please state your name and affiliation with the district when you do speak. And we can start, do you have Sean? Great. Sean, it's all yours.
Dear members of the school board, I'm a parent of two children in the Oregon City School District. I'm here to address ongoing concerns about the gender-inclusive cabin policies at Northwest Regional Outdoor Science School, which our district partners with for outdoor school. Despite numerous emails and discussions with the district, a lack of transparency and choice regarding these policies continues to erode the trust among families. Last week, we learned that some girls were assigned to overnight cabins with a biological male cabin leader without prior notification or consent from the students or their families. Why, while my family opted out of the program due to these concerns, the other families were deeply affected by this unexpected arrangement. And many have privately shared their experiences with the district, and I urge you to consider the impact on these students' sense of safety and privacy. The district's failure to communicate the possibility of mixed-sex cabin assignments is troubling. Title IX protections ensure students' rights to privacy and safety, yet these seem to be overlooked in favor of state policies. There's an uneven approach to student well-being in the district and state policies. There's a strong focus on supporting gender identity, which is important, but it often feels like those of us who hold to biological realities, two sexes, are overlooked. Our children's discomfort deserves equal consideration. True inclusion should value all perspectives, not prioritize one while dismissing others. Why are the comfort and preferences of all students not equally prioritized? Families deserve clear, upfront information about housing arrangements and the option to choose same-sex cabins for their children to fully participate in the camp experience. Raising these concerns publicly to inform our community has led to accusations of bigotry and attempts at censorship. And I am not a bigot. But voicing these legitimate concerns about student safety should not be misconstrued as an attack on those in the community or the district. While the district may not directly control the camp's policies, it has the authority to select partners aligned with federal protections and prioritize student well-being. I respectfully urge the board to take immediate action. Partner with a camp that guarantees same-sex accommodations. Ensure transparent communication with parents about housing policies. And advocate for all students' rights to privacy and safety, consistent with Title IX. As addressed at our March 10th school board meeting with all of you, I'm not asking to dismantle inclusivity, but to balance it with options that respect all families' needs. The children's well-being depend on your commitment to accountability and thoughtful decision-making. Let's work together to select programs that protect all students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to call Michelle Sanders to the front.
These are on, yeah?
Make sure the green light is bright.
Hello? Hi. My name is Michelle Sanders. I'm a parent and volunteer at Gardner Middle School. My daughter has participated in the Totosonidos program since kindergarten. We are proud bilingual humans. We are grateful for the work that you have all done to provide a robust program for these kids. I am, however, concerned about the upcoming school year and the way that it is being slated for staffing in order to accommodate across the board within the building of Gardner. There's the possibility that teachers will be teaching multiple subject areas. If you remember a few years ago, when I was in the audience with a sign that asked about robust education for these kids, one of our chief concerns was that there were teachers that were being asked to teach multiple subject areas. If we think about this program, these folks are specialists. We need to let them go all in on the area that they're really good at, instead of asking them to be spread real thin in order to make sure that everybody is accommodated. I love Gardner. I volunteer there every week, sometimes three or four times a week. I go to junior high by choice. Okay? But what I'm asking you to do is to really look at this Totosonidos program as not just another part of Gardner, but an academy within it that deserves to be respected and its staff deserves to be accommodated in a way that gives it time to do the work that is very specialized. And then also, I wanted to speak to our concerns about outdoor school counselors. I've worked with kids for years. Currently, I'm a small business owner, but my heart is with people who are going through puberty. That's always been who my heart has fought for, much like Director Hayes. I am deeply concerned when the fears of adults impacts the well-being of children. And when we as a community are looking at an opportunity to grow in our understanding, I hope that instead of asking children to accommodate the fears of grownups, we would instead ask the grownups to look at their fears and do the work.
One minute.
So that these kids can thrive, every one of them, every single one of them. I'm deeply protective of my kid. I make sure I ask all the right questions before she does a sleepover. She's 13, she rolls her eyes at me every time. Mom, you know they're good people. I know. But it's my job to do the work because I'm a grownup. And I'm not going to sit at home with my fears and wonder. I've got to be active and be out there. So while I applaud people bringing through things to you, it does have to be for the sake of every child, their identity notwithstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That is the last patron input for the evening.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. So now we have board communication. And we'll start with you.
Hello.
Ms. Bedema.
Hi. So just going over some events that I touched on last board meeting. We had our first Pyo Fest, which was actually a huge success. I was a little worried that, you know, high schoolers would be nervous about like going on bouncy castles, but there was like long lines for every single attraction we had. I heard from all my friends who went like the day after they loved it so much and like they want to do it again. Like, it was really amazing to like see just like how much it like brought everyone together. And I, and our seniors just graduated, which is really sad. But I'm excited for them. And then upcoming is we have our last day of school on Wednesday. So since we're going to semester system next year, student council's already decided like our homecoming theme. And we're just trying to prep everything ahead of time just so that the shift in school, like the scheduling doesn't affect our like quality of events so that we can continue to create like a great homecoming experience for everyone.
Are you going to share what the theme is, or is it a surprise?
Am I allowed to share it? Up to me, don't say that.
I'm just excited.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Debbie from OSEA.
Okay. Well, it's wrapping up to the end of the year very quickly. My husband asked me this last week, he said, how many more weeks do you have left? I said, weeks? Don't push that on me. There's no more weeks. It's just two and a half days. So it's really the only thing we've got left right now is we are still bargaining with the district. We have our conference coming up in a couple of weeks, and so we've got six of us going to that. And then I had reported that nobody applied for the scholarship. And then I got an email from somebody saying, I applied, did you not get that? And I'm like, I don't think I did. So we're fixing that, and we're going to hopefully wrap that up this week as well for them. It was for an OSEA member, so that'll be exciting to help them with some schooling. And then we're also, as we near the end of the year, every year, we always start getting some requests for our hardship leave, people who have used all their PTO and sick time and are still have, you know, they come up sick again or have some medical condition, and they maybe don't qualify for protected leave through the state or federal programs. And so we're processing that as well this week. We've had a few requests for that. And we've had some people step up to donate their PTO that they have not used. And so that's kind of how that works. It's a little bit of ask, and then we donate and share our time with them. I'm always shocked that somebody has PTO to still give away because it's only three days. So it's like, really? You didn't take those days off? Okay. So I use mine, but... So that's what we're working on this week is the scholarship and the hardship leaves, and then we'll be done, other than bargaining.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Asha couldn't join us. Oh, did you have a question? Sorry. Oh, okay. Asha couldn't join us, but she had some things that Lisa can share with us.
She shared a message for you all. It says, "Good evening, school board directors. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight, but I wanted to send along an update nonetheless. First, staff are looking forward to the end of the year, which is always bittersweet. We're always sad to see our students move on and say goodbye, but also excited for a little bit of rest and relaxation, though we know many people also work through the summer. Hopefully, everyone can enjoy at least a little time off. Unfortunately, summer weather came for us a little early, and we had a very hot day today in many schools. We are very glad that we'll be getting AC at elementary schools soon, but we know there are still one to two more years where we'll have to make sure we are adequately managing temperatures in classrooms, which were higher than we had hoped they would be today. Hopefully, students and staff are all catching up on their hydration now, and we are wishing everyone a great summer. And congratulations to the Oregon City School District graduates and retirees. Thank you all. Asha Sandu, OCEA Vice President."
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay. So we can move on to reports and discussion. And up first, we have our athletic and activities update with Trinity Gibbons and Tiffany Travers. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Glad to be here. Good to see y'all. It's fun to see you guys at graduation as well. Got to hang out in the locker room together. That's where all the team bonding happens. Excited to bring Ms. Traver with me today. So I think when we left last year, we were talking about, and we'll get to it on the slides, but, you know, some of the strategic goals we have. And sometimes you've got to put your money where your mouth is. So TIFF was allowed this year to take, you know, not teach one class and sort of take on this load of moving the needle for understanding. We were already doing a lot from an activities perspective, but really, I think in some ways, what the meat of what we're going to show today is how we've moved the needle on tracking and understanding who those kids are, what they're doing, and kind of setting that baseline standard to say, okay, this is where we are. We know that. We've went through the year. And then obviously, we have some goals about where we want to be to make sure every kid is connected. So we'll get to talk about all that. But first, we'll go through our slides here. I can beat Mr. Timmons to the punch. So I'm sure he has this slide in his... Oh, you don't? There we go. So we always start with mission statements. That's how we do it on our team up at the high school. We just review it every time. So I'm not going to read it, but that's our North Star. And we're excited to share about how we're creating that safe and caring environment through athletics and activities. Here's the strategic plan goal that we're working towards, that all students report a sense of belonging and be able to identify one trusted adult, describe a school-related community to which they belong. So we're going to show you some data on that stuff. And we feel good about, you know, reaching some of these goals in our systems. And we shared, I shared a little bit of that in the fall, so I won't belabor that point. But here we go. So I'm going to brag about some kids. I missed a winter meeting, so we're catching up a little bit. And so for the sake of time, I kind of went through and I'm going to brag about just some kids in every sport that really excelled. So here's swimming. Thank you so much. I mean, you'll see on the slides, we came here, I came here 18 months ago and said, hey, we've got to fund this deal, and it has made a difference. I think we had over 60 kids in the program. It's one of our biggest programs up at the high school. Sent 22 student athletes to compete for Oregon City at the state meet. Here's one of them, Rowan Schmidt. She won the girls' 100-meter backstroke with an All-American time. So, you know, I think it's just been exciting for, for our swim program to kind of feel, to feel the way they've always been, which is like a total part of our group. So it's, it's just been, it's, they had an awesome year. And we are chasing the state championship in that program without a doubt. Just trying to get the right group of kids to perform at the right time. So excited for them. Wrestling, we had eight boys and three girls compete for Oregon City at the state meet. There's a picture of Tristan there. He's a just all-around athlete, plays football, wrestling, played lacrosse for us this spring, also leads our volleyball student section. If you've ever seen a kid do a backflip in cowboy boots, come check it out. Just awesome, representative for us. And he won the TRL this year. Didn't have quite the state meet that he was hoping for, but still three Rivers League championship is pretty exciting for him as an individual. Anthony Diaz is one of my favorite young men in our school. He's itching, he's a sophomore this year and has the opportunity to be a state champion wrestling for us. He's right there. So he got second in districts and third at state wrestled all the way back. If you know how the tournament works, when you lose early, it's a long weekend of wrestling back. And he made it all the way back to kind of win out and win his last match of the year. So excited for Augie. Valkyrie, she came to us. So our girls' program is another thing. I came and said, we got to get a coach. We're still looking for a female coach, but we did fund a coach to coach the girls. And you'll see it in my budget because we sent the girls to a lot of meets this year that were sort of girls-only meets. It's exciting. So Valkyrie came to us. She's a senior, first-year wrestler, was a former competitive cheerleader. And the kid is a stud. And it was fun to watch her, and everybody's eyes got wide to think, who is this kid? But understands her body, you know, in a way that was just really impressive and a lot of transferable skills apparently between sort of a gymnastics background and a wrestling, competitive wrestling. So she's, I need to ask Coach where she's landed because she had some scholarship to go to Oregon State just as a student, but there was some folks that were wanting her to come wrestle too. So I can't remember, I will update via email what she ended up doing. But it was fun to have her on the team this year, and our girls' program is growing. We'll show the numbers at later slides. Here's our cheer squad, another one of our big programs. And we're funding it accordingly, which is exciting. They have over 60 girls, well, 60 girls and boys, I guess. I think we had three or four boys on the squad this year. I guess it's the board meeting of tears, but, so we host the state cheer competition. Happened to be on the ice storm that we had. So Joan and I got to work all weekend when everybody was at home, iced in. But we were flexible, and so we pushed the dates of the, it was just, everybody was making it work. Our coaches and kids obviously are excited to host that meet. So there's a lot of things that they do when they're competing for their state championship, moving mats and cleaning and, you know, making it happen. And they went out there and performed, and it was like, they did this move, and it was like stomp, stomp, and yelled, "Pyos!" And it was like the whole crowd, it was just a really proud moment of like, here we are, this is what we're about. And they were a sniff away from a second place. I mean, it was less than one point difference. So very exciting stuff happening in cheer and dance. They also got sixth at state for our dance squad. So they had a great year, definitely moving in the right direction. Girls' basketball, I won't go on and on about it because coaches, coach is moving on. And so I definitely don't want to cry about that because we've had a few of those evenings or afternoons in my office talking about it. But obviously, proud of almost a decade of work from Coach Traver. So we'll just leave it at that. But boys' basketball, really proud of one young man, Gail Impain, three Rivers League Player of the Year. Competed for us in the Northwest Shootout, which is basically the All-Star game against Washington Kids versus Oregon Kids. So it's been a while, I think, since we've had a young man participate in that for us. Just a great young man. Three or four sport, plays golf, has played football, played lacrosse for us. played lacrosse for us a little bit, can kind of do it all and really put it together this year, his senior year. So our boys did really well, playing the second round of state playoffs. So very exciting, nail-biting loss, unfortunately. But so again, lots to be looking forward to in our basketball programs. All right, here, that was the winner. So that was the catch-up. I'll try to keep grinding through this. But baseball, you know, it's it's tough in our league and people that know the Three Rivers can attest to it. But our baseball team got 10 wins, you know, and that's that's big time for us, three of which were in the league. It's been a few years since we've won a league game. So I'm just excited for the guys. I think overall, we walked away feeling like we belonged and, you know, moving in the right direction. So excited for baseball. Softball, you know, basically the same record and it feels like a down year for them, but totally new group of kids. The one I want to mention here, I just had a long conversation with her today. She's off to Yale to play softball next year. But that's Ellie Joseph. So she was named the Three Rivers League Pitcher of the Year. They made a great run right at the end, won some playoff games, you know, kind of came on at the right time. So obviously, proud of our softball program and especially that young lady right there, Ellie. So excited for her. Golf, we had a, there's Trev. He is, if you guys know our coach Dave, it's his labor of love was getting his grandson Trevin through. So I'm looking for a golf coach as well. But he he put it together for us. He, you know, competed good enough at the Three Rivers League tournament to get into the regional tournament. So it's kind of a three-win deal to get to go play, to go participate at state. State's a two-day event. Had a very bad first day, but then turned around and shot a 75 at state, which is pretty dang good golf. So he's, he's a great player, a great young man. We'll miss him in our golf team. So it was exciting to get, get a kid down to go compete at state. Track and field on the girls' side, I had to throw this up here because I think anytime a young woman runs a sub 6400, that's pretty dang fast. And Isla did that for us and was our kind of star on the girls' side, placed second in the TRL and got to go down and compete at state. Didn't have a great meet, but she's pretty new to track too. So just, just an athlete. And not to mention, at the field day, there was a, I tried it. I didn't make it past one. But if you guys have seen the show Wipeout, where there's like the big red balls, this is the only kid at Oregon City High School that can make it across all four. So shout out to that. Also plays basketball for us. So happy for her. She had a great year in track. But really, our boys, track and field team, they were the crown jewel of the spring. Won the league for the second or third year in a row. There's a picture, Keaton Moore, he's our senior. He was named the Three Rivers League Track Athlete of the Year. So the best athlete in the league, had an amazing, all of the boys, you know, I can go on and on about these kids. But the big highlight was the 4x100 meter team went, set the state record, like 41 seconds flat into 4x1 at our, at our place, at the league meet. I mean, it was just, everything came together for them. So super fun. And I imagine that will stand for a while because that is fast. So excited for for those guys. And that was their goal when they started the year is to to get that record. And they just stuck with it. And proud of Coach Tigerson and what he's done with our young men. So they went down to state and we had 17 kids across the board that represented us well down at Hayward Field. And the boys placed fifth overall.
And it looks like the first, the leaders, the...
Yes, they won the, yes, they won at the state meet as well, a little bit slower time than that. But they won. Yeah. And it wasn't close.
[laughter]
Okay, Tiff, remind me where we're switching, but I think I'm still going.
Yeah.
Okay. Here's our numbers. So, yep. She's like, yeah, here we go, here we go. Yeah, we're excited. Everything's up for us. I do want to mention a couple things on this. As you can see there, 12, 12 girls in our girls' wrestling program this year. So we're inching that thing up. And as is the other teams in our league, which is cool. It makes those dual meets really exciting where you can wrestle a full lineup for the girls. So that's been fun and they're doing well. Just real quick. So winner participation numbers, 2022, 206, 2023, 217, 2024, 223, and then this year, 273. So we're feeling good about getting kids going in these things. And obviously, it's been fun to kind of take unified basketball into our, into our world and have amazing students from our other sports that participated in unified basketball this year. And it was, it was just a lot of fun. Won't belabor it. Spring, there's the numbers there. Huge spring for us. Way up in girls and boys, track and field. A lot of guys out for baseball. Softball, we're right there. We're looking for a magic number to move to three teams. It's exciting in the state. Two years ago, there would maybe be four teams in the state that had the third team. It's important to have other teams that have that team so you could play somebody and you're not playing West U High School six times. So we're right there. We're thinking about it pretty hard of of trying to pull that off. And when we have our new turf field, it'll make it easier to get those games in. Okay. Activities. So these are our OSAA sponsored activities.
Want me to Maestegel?
Yeah, I think it's your last one.
My last one. Okay. You can tell we rehearsed. Yeah, these are our numbers for OSAA activities. We kind of group them into two groups because these, these students are subject to OSA rules as far as grades. And we check them just like we do everybody else in athletics. So this is our group. Like I said, all of these numbers are up year over year. So 176 kids. And all of these activities are essentially year-long.
All right. It's now me. So this year, I got to track activities, which is something we haven't really done a lot of. We had a list of things we offered, different clubs we offered, different other groups that we offered at the high school, but didn't have any idea who was in them or really how many people. So it was really fun to add that into the data that we're looking at and see how many kids are part of the OC family. So here's our numbers for that. So these are other groups, not actually sports and not under the OSA umbrella, like Trinity said, but are involved with students and students are doing things outside of the school day with these groups. So there's 515 total there. This, this list is all of our clubs that we offered this year. So besides just knowing how many students were attending these clubs, we knew exactly when the clubs were meeting, who the advisors were, a description of what the club was, who the specific students were in the club, so we could contact them for, you know, whatever that may be. An example is someone emails Mr. Timmons, hey, I have a volunteer opportunity. Can you pass it on? And then it goes to me. And then I know which clubs would, would be good to contact for that. So it was really great to get that information. Part of building this is providing the club advisors with support. So it's something that I heard from a lot of club advisors this year is they didn't have that before. So having a person that they could come and touch base with, I held quarterly meetings with them and kind of gave the advisors a space to collaborate, hear what each other's doing. I was able to pass on information about fundraising, how to get a fundraiser approved, where they could do them at, different ideas or field trips, all of those kind of things, different areas we had for outreach, whether it be at our open house night or Pioneer Welcome Night or whatever event that's going on, was just able to share those with advisors. We're hoping to continue to grow specifically this club area as we build this support system. So that includes like a club handbook that I've been working on. And I've reached out to other high schools around the area that have something like that. That's one spot shopped for all the different resources. We're thinking about, you know, stipends, like how do we decide which clubs are stipend? Is there a way during the school day we can build in access for clubs, whether that be in the advisory period we have next year so more students can access it versus only having the after-school opportunity on a day where we have the activity bus that's later? So all these different things that we're looking to continue to build our clubs and and the access our students have to it, but also the support that our advisors have who are opting into advising a club. Because this does go above and beyond the teacher contract. So it's amazing that we had so many this year and we're just continuing, we're looking forward to continuing to grow it.
Okay, so everything we've shown beforehand, we could have duplicates, you know, the same student could be in football, wrestling. But one of the things that was important to us is to realize if we're trying to get every kid, you know, as we add more activities, you've probably noticed that you have high-achieving kids and they just take on those activities too, which may be counter to the goals. But this, this is just take pulling the data back out of our system to say, how many kids have something, one or more things, and how many have none? And so you could see as the year went on, we felt very confident to say right now, 57-ish percent of students at Oregon City High School are connected to one of the programs we listed. There's a lot that aren't listed. There's other ways to be involved. It's just what we've started with there. So we actually feel very good about that number.
Especially looking at where we started. So November 12th, which is right after first trimester, we were only at 38%.
Yeah. And then again, one of the things that Tiff and I talk about is, okay, how many of those kids are involved in one thing or 10 things? So on the next slide, and Tiff put all this together. It is not me.
A math teacher.
Yes. This is her labor of love. But this is kind of digging a little bit deeper into that data to say, okay, actually, it's not the same 300 kids doing everything. You know, most of the students are doing one thing. Not that, you know, I'm obviously an advocate of dual-sport athletes and that sort of stuff. But it is, the idea is to try to get everybody involved. So you can see there, sort of our data in January and our data in June of, of how that shifts. And obviously, as the year goes on, there's the opportunity to add the second or third thing that you're doing. But it's not, we feel good that we're not just serving the same group of kids over and over and over. Like, we're trying to build a diversity of opportunities that can reach into those pockets of students and say, hey, there's a place for you too. So that's just data kind of showing, you know, obviously, we have the four or more hyper-involved kids. You saw them at graduation with the , you know, ropes around their necks. But it's also, we do feel like we're reaching into those pockets to pull out kids that, and find activities or athletics or clubs that they feel like they can belong. Not sure we did on time, but my favorite part is feeling the questions from y'all. So hit me with it.
This is a great report. I look forward to this one. So thank you so much. Any questions from the board?
It's not a question, just a comment. We had this conversation a year ago and said, you know, we'd really love to know. And congratulations, I'll say that. Thank you. You said that the mission and the vision were your North Star. And you know what? That's our North Star too. So thank you for joining us in that. It's, like has been said many times tonight, it's about the kids. So thank you for, for showing us how that works. I'm working hard to help kids understand that there's a place for them.
This is a very specific question. Do you know how many kids swam this year versus last year? Because 66 is a lot of kids to have on a swim team. That's awesome.
Yes. I know. I can find it very easily. I don't have it at the tip of my tongue. But I know it was less than 55 because we only sent one bus. And I know this year, we sent two buses to everything. So that's my guess.
Also, just want to say, in recognition of that swimmer, that 55 in the 100 back as a high school girl is an incredible time. That's awesome.
What are some of the barriers that you would say for kids that aren't participating either in sports or activities at this point?
Yeah, it's an interesting question because I think some of it could be, you know, self-selecting out. And I, you know, I, I don't think we can be everything for everybody because it's hard to say. They might be connected to a job or, or it's only a look in time, right? They might have done a sport last year and now they're a senior and they're doing something different. I think that access, I mean, that's always kind of the barrier. I, I think it's access. And one of the things, you know, I'm looking pretty hard at the data in athletics too, of like how many boys are participating versus girls participating. And so I think it's seeing yourself, you know, doing track for the first time or, you know, so I think what's, we definitely need to add, for instance, the OSA is looking very hard at girls' flag football. My hunch is if we did that, we would get another 30 girls that aren't doing something else. You know, I think it's a unique opportunity. So it's, it's access, but then it's also, you know, resources. It's hard to deliver these programs. It is, I say it all the time, I said it at the golf thing the other night, it's a labor of love. Nobody's getting rich doing German club, you know? It's because you got, you want to do it. And so I think we're, we're seeing that in our halls as far as the adults too, to say, how do we, and it's the proverbial week, because Tiff's really taking the lead on this, to say, let's reduce friction for the adults to say, here's your packet. This is how you do it. This is how you get money. This is how you operate with the accounting office. Because I do think it's going to take, the next wave is going to take sort of engaging the next group of teachers as well. Because I think that the, we have teachers that are very engaged and they coach a couple of sports and they, and they've got it and they have a confidence around approaching it. And then we've got a couple of new ones that you're like, gosh. The one I keep bragging about is Erin Cole, where she's like rocking and rolling and it's got science National Honor Society growing. And she's like, oh, I get this and I got it. And I think there's a few more out there that just feel like, I don't have time to do this. I don't, I don't know how to, you know, do X, Y, or Z, or do a field trip. So I think that's what we're trying to do administratively is like reduce the friction for the adults to say, what are you into? I bet there's some kids here that are also into that. You can get this started.
I think, I think also giving students power of knowledge of how to start a club. That's something we did big in the fall. It's like pushing that information out through our OC TV or announcements or the club board. Like, anyone can start a club. You just need to have an interest group and then find a teacher or staff member that's willing to advise it. So continuing to send that message out too. So it's both student and teacher-led is huge. But yeah, access during the day will be big. We're working on that.
Since, this is a follow-up question to what I just heard. Since we've been talking tonight about elsewhere, about volunteers, are there, is it okay for people from the community to advise these clubs? Should they be interested?
It's a great idea. I don't see, I mean, we have people from the community coaching on our teams, volunteering, swim coaches volunteering. So perhaps that is something that if we had a mechanism to make that happen, it would make sense.
Yeah, something to think about.
The swim coach is still a volunteer position?
No, no, it's the, but there's a few that help.
Just making sure.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all of a sudden, three coaches goes to five, one of you are getting paid. And then they drag the next round of volunteers and get them started.
I would be curious on the data of kids that participate, right? And then how it's connected to grades and behavior and attendance, right? Ultimately, is what we want to see happen. That's how we make those connections and that feeling of belonging.
Yeah, I can ask our resident math teacher. Probably pretty easy to add some of those data points to the, you know, what is the average for the participators and the non? Yeah, we'll definitely bring that back to our next, next meeting.
Mike, you've been very patient. Go ahead.
I was going to ask that question about the data because I know that one of the former ADs did the GPA for me and it, some of this group was carrying the, the high school. So big time. So but thank you both. Love that this is a passion of mine, extracurriculars. I think everybody needs some be connected. They might not like math class. They might, because they have you as a teacher and are connecting. But I mean, it, sometimes you got to be focused and you can just be cool in German club or something and hang out and chat and the teacher's not going to yell at you or something. But this, we've all, I know some of us play sports and I have kids on this and we've made our lifelong friends and maybe chatting in the locker room or on the football field or on the basketball court. And it's, it's a great place or in the band room or in the drama department. The, thank you for being a grace, running the track meet. Oregon City has the best stadium in the TRL and gets to host the district track meet. And I've participated in the district track meet down there back in the day. And it is, and seen my kids go through and it is ran top-notch. Some just great, the Tigersons and everybody do a great job. Our staff did. I think Tigerd was actually the host maybe, but we host the meet. They run, they run some of the particulars. And you, you and Joan spent two days down there and it is a great event. If any of the board members want to watch something professionally done in a great environment, inclusivity, it's down there. Thank you for letting me come on the field. I might have snuck on there and I snuck in the press box because I knew that was going to be a fantastic relay. That is the best place to watch anything in our stadium. Don't tear it down unless we're going to replace it with something because it goes straight up and I'll, we'll go down and me and you'll watch a football game or something. It might look like crap, but it is the best down there. And when you were talking about the kids running, the hair on my arm was standing up because I knew it was going to be a great time because they, they ran such great legs and, and... it was going to be a great time, because they ran such great legs. And Colin Smith coming around that corner, I go, this, something's going to happen special here. And I'm getting goosebumps right now. And when Tigerson came over and said, we just broke the state record, not the school record, the state record, the press box was scrambling. How do we verify this? Because we can't say it. By the time they got to announce it, they had verified it, and it was static. So, hats off to them and everybody down there. And to Oregon City for having such a great facility to put on that event, where the javelins out back, not going to hit anybody, and the discus, you know, we got some new hurdles. That was pretty cool to see. And I had a busy spring, but I got to come to a couple of track meets, and thank you for all the stuff. I was going to ask about the girls' flag football, because it is the fastest-growing sport in America right now. And I was at Tuallaton watching a lacrosse game, and they were in the backfield playing, and there were three schools back there. And I think that would be awesome if our girls could have that opportunity, because there were girls that might not be doing anything in the spring. I know the other coaches are like, track girls' coaches, maybe like, ah, that sucks, or put it somewhere else, because I don't want to lose my kids. But, they did that when they introduced girls' lacrosse, and my daughter was not ever going to run track, because her dad was a track coach. But, when lacrosse came out, she went out and played lacrosse. So, you get those kids that might not be interested in something like that, but maybe had a brother that played football, or a dad, and it's, it's going to be awesome. Thank you for your work. It's been a long, I know you get, I hope you get a vacation here. It's been a long year. So...
It's been, it's been awesome. Yes. District track was awesome. And we are, you know, I try to go the way our league goes with some, just for scheduling and stuff. And we have reached a critical mass on the girls' flag. And so, I think everybody's about to jump on it. And our, my counterparts have kind of ways where you're like, hey, if you were a varsity athlete in track last year, like perhaps you should stick with track, and just conversation with kids of not trying to poach. But, I do think what's interesting about flag in particular is that everybody's going to come in as a beginner, and that's helpful for girls as an entry point. It doesn't feel like, I didn't start in fourth grade, youth, whatever, so I can't do it. It's like, everybody's going to show up and be on the same footing. So, it might be a good opportunity for, for our, for our girls.
Well, follow, one more quote, about the track meet. I saw Unified at the district track meet, and I was wondering where, I know, it was all Lake Oswego. I'm like, I talked to the coaches, I said, that'd be awesome if our Oregon City kids were down there participating. I don't know, I know it requires a coach and commitment. Is there any talk of bringing Unified track? Because...
I got the guys' number from Lake Oswego of how they, how they approach it. And some of it, it's nice in track, because it's, it is a place where it's, can be unified. I mean, you probably, you don't need another shot-put coach. It's just you need maybe a manager to kind of, and so, they've approached it. Obviously, they're all in on their Special Olympic stuff. And it's cool, because even at the state meet, they have some, some unified races. So, we, we should, it seems like a no-brainer, but got to find the adult that wants to take it on. But, we'd love to get them going, because it's, it's pretty straightforward. We're already down at the track. It's just one more event, you know. It's not like a whole separate.
Yeah. And that was great. The crowd was just cheering everybody. It was just like any, everybody else. It was like they're running against the clock like everybody else, and being, you know, their own championship. It was cool.
Did you get it all out?
No, I didn't. She's worked hard this year, self-quit.
It was awesome.
Yeah. I just want to thank you guys for collaboration, and just really reaching out to help more kids get involved. I know our high schools in general are working really tightly. And now that we have this baseline data, it's an opportunity for us to dig into that 43% and say, what are you connected with? Is it a CTE program? Is it something outside of the school? We know that having one caring adult in a child's life makes a huge difference. It's not their family member. And so, it will help us kind of narrow from the 43 down to the 30, to maybe the 18% that we need to tap on the shoulder and get to know, and really connect to schools. So, just all of this work that you've done is really impressive, and I want to thank you for it.
Thanks, Tiff.
Any other thoughts or questions from the board?
Yeah, I just want to echo that as well, and just say, I'm so excited to see the growth. Because of the coming out of the whole COVID thing, everyone was so isolated. And so, just seeing people starting to really embrace it, it's been very, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one just clarifying question, as I'm looking at the list of clubs. And I just noticed this, what is in stitches?
It's knitting, or knitting.
Knitting? Oh, how fun. Then, the other thing is, there are three asterisks, but there's nothing connected to them.
Yes. Asterisks are new this year.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't put that note there. But, those were additions.
Everything else, I could kind of figure out what they did. But, in stitches could have been any number.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is fantastic. Next, we have our food services update, and Sedexo contract renewal with Michael Sweetin and Jeff Ralston.
How's everyone doing? Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. All right. I'm going to introduce you, Jeff. All right. So, I asked Jeff to come in today just to share a little bit about our nutrition program. Every year, so it's a five-year contract, but every year, we renew, and they have to rebudget based on the Consumer Price Index and just cost of things, right? So, but, really new this year was a huge lift, which was the Community Eligibility Provision, which is CEPP. And so, I just asked Jeff to come, share a little bit about that, what the difference that made this year, and then what do we have to look forward to in the next year. That's what we're just going to be.
Okay. You can bring up the next slide if you want, with the chart. Okay, so this is just crazy. Okay, so, and I'll break it down. But, last year, '23, '24, we did, you know, almost 415,000. This year, we did 560, we're 152,000 more meals right now than we did last year. It's just, it's mind-blowing. I don't even, it's, I mean, we had a couple bumps at the beginning, but it was like, now it's just like, it's, it's like we're doing it all the time. It's not, there's no bumps or anything right now, wouldn't you say?
Yeah. And I just want to say that, that's with no additional staff.
Yeah.
Right?
So, it's the same staff level.
I think we only, Lisa can correct me, but I think it was two hours this year? Two hours in the entire district to our staff, and they were able to pull this off. That's a huge kudos to them, and just so great that so many kids are taking advantage of this opportunity.
Yeah. And we just want to keep working to have more kids take it, because if you look at the number, there's still quite a gap out there that are not eating at school, or bringing their own lunch, or whatever that is. But, the programs we have running right now to help that is, we have a great program at the middle schools, Taste Four at the high school, which is very popular. Nachos is like number one, probably. Even the more-than-pizza nachos. We are looking at starting in the fall, Bright Bites. I think that's the next slide, after breakfast. I'm sorry, after lunch. That's the whole year, what I just said. It just showed in a breakdown in three different slides with the same number, just seeing, kind of get an idea of what it looks like. But, in this fall, we're looking at starting Bright Bites, which is a new program that Sedexo has. They've already been implementing throughout the country. And it looks pretty, it's pretty cool. There's some, I'm just finding out about it as far as what we're going to do. In fact, I have a meeting in the next couple of days, I'll get some more information, and I can bring that to you as I find out what it is. But, there are tastings for the new kids, or for the new programs. There are going to be groups that have decisions, that the kids can make these decisions. There's going to be some basics on it that they already like, like, you can't take pizza away, or there'll be, yeah. So, things like that. The most popular, you know, there'll be three, or four, or five popular items that will stay there, and then we'll start implementing new items. You know, different things where the kids can taste these at all the different schools, and not just at one. And they make a decision for everybody, but taste these items at all the different elementary schools. So, we're going to start implementing that. And that should be in the fall, when that comes, October, November, December, somewhere in that realm. Just depends on time and when we want to get this started. Because we have to kind of verse it with the, with the bond too. We're going to start, and we're just not going to do these huge marketing things until the kitchens are done. And then, we'll, you know, put that stuff. There'll be some stuff up, just the stuff that you can take down and put back up. But, we're pretty excited about that. We've done, been doing the current one for at least five years, if not longer. What's that?
Probably longer.
Yeah, probably longer. So, yeah. And that's kind of an idea of what it looks like. But, it's going to really fit real well. Looking at what we saw in the new kitchens and stuff, and this program, it's just, they're going to meld together, I think, pretty well. So...
That's fantastic.
Any questions?
Questions from the board? Thoughts?
No questions, just to say thank you, and that I'm very excited to see what these new kitchens look like when we get this bond going. And I hope that you've got your input going in the architects.
Well, it's, I'm excited. I saw them, I saw them, and I didn't even expect it. I mean, they've shown them in the meeting, and then I've gone, what? What? So, yeah, they're basically a mini Gardner, is what the kitchens are going to look like. Yeah. It'll be really cool. Everybody's going to love it. Kids and the people working in the kitchens.
Heidi, did you have something you wanted to say?
Just if you had anything to say about the summer programs. I know students have access.
Yes, it starts the Monday after school's out. So, we have five sites this year. Gardner, we have Eastham, Kingsbury Apartments, which is, was, we used to have in the past, which was a very good site. We also have Tom Water with the classes and stuff going on there for three weeks.
And that's a closed site. So, there are some differences.
A different closed site, yeah.
So, there are four open sites for the public. So, Kingsbury, Gardner, we added Eastham this year, and then...
Jenny's Lodge.
Jenny's Lodge, like it has been in the past. That's our big camp area. And so, we have a lot of participation there. But, Tom Water is a closed site. It's just during the time when the middle school, high school summer program is there. Just because it's a little off the beaten path, you're probably not just wandering down the street around Donovan, and hopping in for lunch and breakfast. So, that one, that'll just be during that program time. The others will go most of the summer. I think they don't quit until...
August 15th. So, it's two weeks before school starts. We let everybody have two weeks off to get rested up, and then start going again.
Thank you, Heidi, for reminding us.
Yeah. And just for the public who can come to that, those, any, what are the criteria for people to access that?
Zero to 18. You have to eat on-site, at least the main portion. You know, the main entree, you have to eat on-site. After that, you can take an apple home, or the milk home, or whatever. But, you have to eat the main item on-site. But, yeah, zero to 18. Yeah.
And I saw, we have that on our homepage on the district website, so if anybody has any questions, that's really helpful.
Thank you.
Awesome. I'm really grateful for everything you do. We need to meet our kiddos' basic needs, so that they can be successful at school. And the work you and your team do is incredible and inclusive, and we're really grateful for it. Thank you.
No, thank you. Big team effort. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have our bond update. Mr. Hobbs.
Good evening, everyone. We should just start this with, we got this, right? So, I suspect as our, as our time moves forward here on the bond, we're going to hear more and more bits and pieces, as we've heard tonight. We heard about kitchens from Jeff. We've heard about fields from Trinity. We've heard about HVAC and heat from our OCEA rep today. These are all things that we've got, right? We are going to get these things addressed. It's just time, right? So, we have a nice set schedule as we go forward on these projects, and these are all things that are going to get addressed. So, we're excited for that. We're excited to be able to deliver on the needs that the district has. And I suspect you'll hear me say that every meeting as we go forward. If you could go to the next slide, please. So, we have been... That's, that's fine. We have been very busy here on the bond program. We are getting ready on the fields and grounds projects, which are the projects that are moving first, primarily because they are quicker for design and permitting, but they do still take time. So, we have been into the city on our land use application for the Oregon City High School fields. That is for permits, just went in for land use on the artificial turf replacement, or addition at the three fields. And we also have gone in for land use on the general project that is looking to do site amenities, restrooms, concessions, walkways, drinking fountains. All of those are in process with Oregon City Planning Department. There is a process. Things do take time. That's why when we think about looking at what is happening and what is starting, we are, we are well underway under these projects, but they just take time, both in design, as well as in permitting and planning with the city. We're also, have just submitted our pre-application on Pioneer Stadium. That is really a critical point for us to get into city planning for the pre-application for land use, to really understand what is the city going to require us to do with the proposed ideas and concepts that we have. And I just say concepts, because depending on what the city says, will help drive what our final solutions are at that particular site. So, that pre-application, I believe, is about two and a half weeks out from now for Pioneer Stadium. And that'll give us some really helpful information on what we can do at the site with minimal disruption and a cost-effective solution for some of the ideas that are happening there.
How long does it take to hear back from the city typically?
Well, we, after we go through a pre-application, which is just us sitting down and talking to the city about what our concepts are, we get some initial feedback around what concerns that they might have, what sections of code might be particularly relevant. Are we required to put in ADA access, for example, things like that. That will just be initial feedback, so that we can really craft our initial designs that we go back in for permitting and land use. Those come back pretty quickly, usually within a week to two weeks, to get their initial comments back from the pre-application. And then, we have about 30 days in which to turn around and submit our application for land use. And then, it runs 120 days. This is statutory in Oregon City Code, to go through the land use process. And it may be quicker than that, but that's the larger timeframe that we have to deal with. That's why when we start talking about schedules as we go forward here, it's a little uncertain exactly how long it'll take, because it really depends on how complicated our designs are, and how much impact there is on the city, and looking at code and associated items with, with their approvals for our projects as we go forward. Okay? Give the next slide, please. Actually, could you back up for just one second? I apologize. The other large thing that has been happening here has been our elementary school work. We have been very busy on our elementary school design advisory groups. Our last meeting was last week. It was the third in a series. These have been meetings that have involved all six elementary schools, representatives from staff, administration, students, community members, all participating in helping us to craft what a education specification looks like for the elementary school. In other words, what does an elementary school in Oregon City look like as we go forward? So, this work has been really impactful to understanding the needs, I think, from a whole bunch of different perspectives in the community, as well as in the schools, as well as with the students, on what they need in these different areas. Parking and drop-off, cafeterias, special education, playgrounds. These were all topics that were discussed and looked at in quite a bit of detail. We're working on kind of taking all of that input that was given, which was a lot, and trying trying to organize that as we go across the summer here. We'll report back to those groups in the fall about what we heard and what direction we're going. But that will help to inform and give us some, some thought on how we're approaching the design across the summer for the elementary schools. We'll come back in the fall with all of those groups, talk about the things that we've heard, show revised designs that we've come up with that will, will address many of the issues that are, and were discussed at those meetings, but certainly not everything. We have limitations in our bond program in terms of funding. We're not going to be able to do everything that everybody wants, but we're trying to optimize and maximize what we can do with the resources we have to address as many of these issues and concerns as we possibly can. At this last meeting last week, we shared some initial school concept designs, similar to what I shared with you all at the board work session in May. Those designs will be posted on the webpage by the end of the week for each of the elementary schools. And it's important to remember, these are just concepts. What our process is across the summer, we are going out to hire our general contractor and construction manager. They will take some of these initial concepts that have been put together, and we'll start doing some more refined pricing exercises to see where we are in relation to our budgets. Simultaneously, our architects will use a cost consultant to do another set of costing on that. So we have multiple opinions on costs that we'll have coming together by, we'll call it August, to see if we're on track with the proposed scope that we've got and really help us drive into the fall on refining the designs at those elementary schools and really helping to ensure that we're within our budget. Or if our budgets need to be adjusted, then that's our time to start talking about it. It's the reason we looked at all six elementary schools together is again, so that we have a basic understanding of where our budgets stand on all six of those being built over two different phases, right? Phase two, starting next summer, phase three, starting the following year, and making sure that we have our budgets right-sized for those projects with still a healthy reserve left aside to deal with unforeseen conditions that we have coming up. So in the fall, we'll be rolling out refined designs on schools. For the schools themselves and for the communities, we'll be in those schools a lot, talking with all of the community about what is being proposed and continuing to seek input as we move forward. There comes a point in time where we don't take more input. We really have to just stop and we have to finalize the design and get the thing out to bid. But really, we're looking at late August, September, October, as really opportunities to take these more refined concepts that we're going to work across the summer on and seek additional input from the community, from the students, from the staff, from the administrators, and certainly from leadership here in the district to really work on finalizing those designs. So it's really a, an opportunity to take as much input as we can, to be as transparent as we can about why we're doing what we're doing, why we can't do certain things, what other great opportunities have come out of the conversations we've had about ways that we can solve problems within the district. And there is quite a bit of change that will be coming to our elementary schools, as, as I think we're all aware. They're, they're desperately in need of updating in many areas, just about all areas, as a matter of fact. And so we're really excited about what those opportunities look like.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? Will this include all six schools then, this part of it, or just the first three?
Right. Great question. We'll be out in the fall to do an initial touch base with all six schools to refine the, the feedback that came out of the education specification work. But we're not going to be proceeding beyond July or so with further design on the phase three schools. Those will kind of sit to the side until we get into the, essentially the spring of 2026, when we need to pick those back up and start that design process to get ready for the following summer. And we'll come back and revisit that with all those schools.
And at that time, I hope we'll be, once again, explaining to those communities that their money is set aside so that. They don't think when other things happen, or if we have to change up, that they're going to end up with no money and their schools won't happen.
Absolutely.
I just want to really encourage that communication.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's really, I mean, it leads into the, the next piece of what we had last week, which is the, which was the second meeting of the Community Bond Oversight Committee. And that really is the group, again, that is focused on helping to monitor our financial oversight of our bond program and really ensuring that we are spending the districts, sorry, spending the community's money wisely and that we're being very transparent with our decision-making. So they are continuing to ask lots of questions of us, very similar types of questions. How are you ensuring that the phase three schools are going to have enough money? And we're starting to, to help to educate them on what this looks like, the reason we're going through all six of these schools initially for costing, so that we really have a good handle on our budgets associated with all of these projects as, as we move forward. And then there'll be further refinement, obviously, as, as we go into our next phase. Now, if we could grab the next slide. A brief financial update, and really, this hasn't changed much, other than it's gone up. We had our first interest hit our accounts, which is great. This was as of May 29th. And I think subsequent to that, there's been additional funds that have come in in terms of interest, but we have to cut these reports off at some point. So as of May 29th, we had received a little over $143,000 in interest on our bond proceeds that have all been invested, and that's a great start. So it's showing that we're continuing to have money going forward. This will continue to get reflected in our financial updates as, as we're going forward. And we're also tracking our expenditures to date, which are also shown on here. We've, we've spent about 1.7 million in bond proceeds so far. That goes back to July of 2024 for a variety of costs associated with a long-range facility plan, associated with some of the bond office salaries, bond office setup, and then obviously design phase services that have started on many of our sites. Some of our sites have had very little expenditures to date, but those will continue to go up and we'll continue to provide a snapshot of this to you on a regular basis as we go And then as our last slide, just again, on, on schedule, we are anticipating the fields and grounds starting in fall of 2025. That could be August. Again, depending on permitting for installation of the turf fields. Those will be ready and playable by the start of, of the season in, in February for baseball and softball. So they'll be ready to take on those state championships, right, Trinity? Right. As we go forward here. But it'll also have a large impact on, on the school and on community sports as well. As we know, we'll be turfing the football field up near the high school that is used for many functions outside of athletics, but also all of those fields heavily used by the community. And we're, we're very excited to be able to provide that as we go forward. Pioneer Stadium is likely to start in late 2025 or early 2026. It'll certainly be post-football season so that we don't disrupt the football season there. It becomes a little bit of a challenge, as we heard a lot about track and excellence with track. We've got to really squeeze a bunch of work in between these major sports seasons. And so exactly what that looks like as our scope gets refined, we'll refine that schedule. It could be parts of it are done in the interim between kind of football and track season, and then they pick up again in the summer of 2026 with other work before football season starts in the fall of 2026. We'll, we'll see how that develops as we go forward. We're anticipating career technical education at Oregon City High School and then the three elementary schools to start in spring of 2026. And I say spring, for sure, full-blown construction will be happening as of, let's call it mid-June of 2026, when school is dismissed. But there are opportunities potentially, as, as we start to develop scope, to do some work onsite, undoubtedly bringing in temporary accommodations in terms of modular classrooms. There could be some site work happening that doesn't disrupt students and activities that could start as early as spring break with an early permit package from the city. And again, we'll see as we, we go. We're way too early to make those calls yet, but that's why I'm calling this kind of spring of, of 2026. And that will run through August of 2027, right? It'll be a full 14 months. We'll be ready to go when school opens the following fall, but it will really be a, a full-blown shot at all three of these. And then the same for phase three will roughly follow the same schedule, a spring to the following summer construction schedule for phase three as well. We have a variety of continuing upcoming meetings. We actually went out to Holcomb today to talk to their staff for an optional meeting. We have a meeting tomorrow with Gaffney Lane is the last of our elementary schools that we're trying to hit before everyone is out for summer, just to give them an opportunity to ask questions at this point. And again, I think for many of them, it will be the fall as we come back with more refined designs where they really are, are taking more notice and asking more questions as, as we go forward. And then we've got a Community Bond Oversight Committee meeting. Our third one will be in August. That meeting will be a setup for a presentation coming here to the board in September, which will be their independent update for you on how their perspective of our financial oversight is for the bond program. And with that, I'll open it to any questions.
Great. Go ahead, Deb.
So really quickly, you did say something in regards to the modulators that you're going to use for the elementary schools. And we also had, I think we had communicated a long, a while ago about using King Elementary.
Potential.
What are we doing in regards to the families that live close to the schools that actually have the walking distance? Are we looking at having the, having the students like go back to the school and then bus them to King Elementary? Or are we looking at putting new sites in?
We have not gotten to the point to look at transportation in detail. That will be a very detailed discussion with Michael's successor. Looking at transportation and really working on a complex, detailed transportation and nutrition services, for that matter. We will be disrupting kitchens. So what are we doing about nutrition services and, and how is that going to operate in whatever facilities we have or different locations? How does that work? And that's all part of the planning we've got coming in the next six months or so.
So I'm a little early.
You're a little early, yes. So we'll, we'll be able to by, I would say, probably by the end of the year, we'll have a very detailed plan, starting to be laid out for both where our students are going to be, what the timing of that looks like, and what the facilities and needs are in terms of transportation, nutrition services, et cetera. And so we are considering both modulators onsite, as well as King as a potential swing site to use for, for housing students. King is not large enough, obviously, to hold any one of our elementary schools in its entirety, but with some additions of modulators, there are opportunities there. But it also requires a lot of work with the city on King because it requires an increase in the capacity of the King School. And that requires a whole formal process in land use. So we have a lot of work on all of that to do logistics-wise. We're actively starting to think about that, but really, we need our contractors on board to help us with our phasing plans, help us to understand how they want to build these projects as we go forward. They will really be that linchpin in helping us to understand what makes sense in terms of, of taking over sections of schools, moving students around, getting them out of certain areas of the school so that we can work on those areas during the course of the school year and provide as minimal disruption as we possibly can.
So the second question I had is, obviously, the fields and grounds that are going to be breaking ground here in the fall, obvious, we, you know, I'm part of the youth football program. My question is, is that if you are going to be looking at, you know, remodeling, or I guess redoing the fields at the high school, are you doing lower section first, baseball fields, and then upper section? Is that the stages you're going to do? Or is it something that we're going to have to not be able to use the upper fields and move somewhere else?
Right.
And then, oh, good, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, and then the second question is, is that, is, does it go into the season of cross-country? Because I know that cross-country does host all of that that's going on, and how is that going to be affected in regards to that?
Right. All great questions. So we've just engaged, we've just engaged with Sue's here in the last, I don't know, two to three weeks on really getting a projection of what sports and what field usage around the district is happening on an annual basis, so that we can start to understand both what the timing is at the high school fields and then what other availability there are on fields around the district. If we do have some displacement that has to happen, we're going to start looking at that. So do we have an answer to that? I don't yet.
Okay.
I also am waiting on our finalized quote from our contractor, FieldTurf, who will be purchasing through a cooperative purchasing agreement that will likely come to the board in July for approval. And assuming that's approved, they will help put together that schedule of what their sequence is. What they know for sure is that baseball and softball have to be open February 1st. So those, whether those are the priorities or not is yet to be determined. They may have multiple crews available that can take on multiple fields at one time. So we're, we're really going to have to, again, have those conversations. You're just a little bit early for that, but you're asking the right questions for, for us to have answers to that. And the same is true for all of the high school sports, not just softball, baseball, football, which is impacted on that upper field. But also cross-country, soccer, right? There are lots and lots of sports that are out there that we've got to coordinate and work closely with the high school and with Trinity and Greg on what we need, what we can do with the high school sports if they're going to be impacted. And we've been working very closely on the designs with trying to make sure that we're accommodating, in particular, cross-country, which is the most zigzag route across the, the fields that we have. It's challenging to not have an impact, but we've had some discussions already about those areas where we will likely have some hard surfaces that are crossing that path. And again, it'll be pretty minimal in the grand scheme of things, but there will be some minor impacts to, to those areas.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
When we passed the bond, we really engaged the business community and the neighborhood associations, attended lots of events. Is there, how are we communicating with those groups that aren't as connected to the schools?
Absolutely. So we'll, we'll be out, whether required to by Oregon City Planning or not, we will be out at the neighborhood associations, talking about these projects as we get the designs coming. We've been out, I think Dr. Crane and myself, and I believe Greg, all attended the Caulfield Neighborhood Association right after I started, I believe. That was February, perhaps. So we're already actively engaged with those community associations. We certainly have an intention, again, in some cases, we're required by the city planning department to go and meet with those community associations. But our plan is to be out in the community and, and really sharing the message about what our projects are and what the impacts are going to be, so that the neighbors really have an understanding of what's coming in those communities. We don't have a set schedule for that yet. Again, that'll be likely happening in the fall and into the spring as we really start rolling on this and understand what our scope and the impacts are really going to be. As an example, those community associations, I think, are meeting monthly or quarterly, depending on, on which ones they are. And we'll make sure that we're getting on their calendars well in advance to make sure we're sharing that information.
There was, when I went to the Gaffney Lane Association, there was a gentleman that had it to like the inch on how you could improve the traffic flow and change the parking lot. It was, he spent hours, he had a PowerPoint that he presented to us as the, so that, yes, there's neighbors that have very good information to share.
Absolutely. And we were actually also, Kim Davis, who's the, the, in the bond office with me, the two of us went out to the district PTO, PTA, PTSO. I, I don't know if I have all the acronyms right. We were out there two weeks ago, I believe, two weeks ago, talking with them, the, the members of those respective schools that were there about the bond program. We're doing everything we can at this point, which we're still a little bit early to really be talking about scope, but really to get the message out, really sharing the information. Again, it's this whole concept of transparency and, and communication, really letting folks know what we're doing, why we're doing it, what the impacts are going to be on the community, and hopefully the good news about the improvements that are going to be there when, when we're
And we talked a little bit about this at the community meeting, but just so that everyone hears it, with the fall timeline being when you're expecting there to be some great things to share with staff and gather more feedback, is that time still in an appropriate time for their feedback to be incorporated in the planning process? Just wanting to make sure that folks who take that time off during the summer still get a chance, if they haven't had the opportunity yet, to join in the conversation and provide their feedback before it's kind of written in stone.
Right, yes. The answer is yes. So the input, the opportunities for input in really in late August, when the, when everyone comes back and into September, and at least the first parts of October, is really the time still to give input. It's kind of after that, as we enter the last phase of design on these projects, is where we really don't take much more input. We have to just finalize the things and get our permit set into the city to try and meet our construction timeline of June of next year. So there will absolutely be that opportunity for continued input to happen in the fall. So there will absolutely be that opportunity for continued input to happen in the fall.
I just want to make sure all those people that are working in the schools get an opportunity to share their expertise.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I do want to chime in. We've talked a little bit, I think Caitlin's making like a four pager spread that she's going to send out to our community over the summer. I think there's been some wonderings as we've been having these meetings about like, well, who's deciding? And just helping people understand, the long range facility planning group came to you with some needs. The school board started or initiated the bond committee, advisory committee, who then brought a proposal, which then became a bond measure that was voted in by the public. So a lot of the decisions were made before it was even voted on. Now we have to follow through with our commitment that we asked our community to invest in. And so of course, design work, you know, there's some pieces there. But we sort of know what we're expected to do in terms of walls at JME, heating, air conditioning, you know, bathrooms that are safe, those sorts of things. But I do think there's lots of opportunities to get involved with design. And I really appreciate so many people who've come to these meetings to share their thoughts and to come to the optional meetings at the school. I feel like people are really chiming in already and we're excited to get some design work so they can actually provide some concrete details. I also want to shout out to the CBOC, that group of people, brilliant, smart, smart people. We were like, oh, what is that? So we're digging in, they're asking amazing questions and a lot of expertise on that committee. So thank you to them as well.
Fantastic. Any other questions from the board?
I have nothing tonight.
Oh, a rarity. Go ahead.
I know Debbie asked a little bit about the fields and grounds and just there, there's going to always, whenever you do a remodel, there's always going to be pain. I just, I'm a contractor, I mean, if you think you're going to, we're going to remodel your house or you're not going to have some inconvenience, there's going to be inconveniences. But I'm glad your husband is a Marine and can adapt and overcome, and he will make sure those kids find field seven and eight probably.
He's married to me, he's good.
Yeah, so he'll be able to, we're going to probably have some growing pains, but everybody's going to do it and it's, you know, it costs a little to get a little, so we're going to get some great fields. So that's all I have.
And just building on that, Director Control is also, the elementary schools are also going to feel some pain. And we're already communicating that with the staff, right? It's really, the kids don't really, maybe they understand, but not fully understand until they're actually living it. However, our teachers and our staff do know. And so we have been very clear in our communication with all of them that, you know, you are going to be disrupted. It is going to be a disruptive process because we have to rebuild your entire school during the school year. And so we're trying to keep them prepped. We're going to give them lots of resources and tools to help them with everything they need to do as they go through this process with us. And we're in it together as a team, that's the goal. And we're really, yeah, we're really focused on that piece of it. But there will be disruptions across the district, not just in sports, not just in youth sports, but also in our elementary schools and our teaching.
I was sitting here going, thinking of John McLaughlin in my head about all the work that's got to be done. I'm like, just from dust mitigation to safety, because that's going to be key concern while you're doing construction, have little kids running around the parking lot, big trucks coming in and out. I'm like, I wouldn't even want to touch it. So hats off to you.
This is stuff we've been doing for years. It's a very normal process. We will get some great contractors onboard that are, have a very good safety record and have done this type of work in schools around the area many, many times. And not just the firm, but the actual individuals working on their team. It's really the key piece and it's the reason that we're going with the direction of a construction manager, general contractor, is really for that safety in our schools and making sure that the kids stay very safe throughout the course of the project, as well as our staff.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you so much. And lastly, we have the 2025-26 high school schedule, Mr. Timmons. Good evening.
Am I on? There we go. All right. Hey, thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for your work. And thanks for everybody coming to graduation. I just, to start with, I want to shout out, you know, throwing a party for 5,000 people is kind of a big deal. And two people lead the charge, Lisa Ramage and Erica Froff-Yord. And I mean, they plan a party for 5,000 people and it went super well. You all know that. Saw some great pictures. Super, graduation night's one of my favorite days of the job. So thanks for supporting us to get there. It was a good time. Okay, high school schedule, want to back up aside, there's important stuff on that. First of all, take a look at that slide because there are three high schools in our school district and we are working together on this work. And so that's something that we are proud of, I think, and I know. And so it feels good to be aligning our work and, yeah, just that. So, and then I'm going to pick up on a comment that you made, Director Control, remodeling equals pain. As we transition, change is challenging. And so we recognize that. And that probably has churned a lot of questions and community like, what's it going to be like? And we don't know. And we don't, and people don't have an understanding of that. And so it's a hard thing to get there until you get there and you see it. So you can move forward now, thank you. The, I'm going to, and Trinity called me out. She had the mission and vision I always talk about. We start every meeting at the high school with mission and vision on it. And I put this together, you know, shame on me for doing it the week of graduation, you know? But we, I almost always do, but to the point of, three of our school improvement plan goals are around increasing a sense of belonging, increasing attendance, and increasing our on-track rates, which are all parts of why we are making a shift in our schedule. We want to impact those in a positive way. The first main bullet here, increasing the consistency that we provide for our students and our staff. We are aligning a schedule and reporting periods that will align with Case, Ochsla, and Oregon City High School. So I'll get into that a little bit more detail and what some of that looks like. But this will allow us to align our practices better. We'll be able to align practices amongst content teachers if we're having, you know, US history class aligned. Well, it turns out they teach US history at Case and Ochsla too, so it would make sense that we align our work together so that when kids do transfer back and forth, they're getting more similar, common experiences. So that's a big piece of this work. The consistency for student-teacher schedules. What I'm referring to here is it's almost easier to say, what is it like right now? When we're on a trimester right now, if I'm taking integrated math two, I might have it A section or the A portion of that fall trimester and then B and spring trimester with a gap in between. And I might be showing up into that B section with somebody that just took it during winter section into my new class. And it might be with a different teacher and a whole different group of kids. And so that inconsistency is really challenging. It doesn't provide that opportunity for a year-long relationship of a classroom, the culture of a classroom, which is incredibly important for learning. When we have a strong culture that's built in a classroom that is consistent all year long, that allows for greater learning to take place, all right? It can impact our attendance and impact our ability to be, to feel connected, to have an adult, when you have a longer relationship with that adult that's taking place all year long. We have that sometimes right now. If you're taking some courses that are year-long courses, you get that opportunity, but not everybody takes year-long courses. The trimester doesn't allow everybody to take year-long courses because you can't fit all the credits you need. And so that is a big, big piece of that. The schedule will also increase access for our students. We will be able to, with more space in the schedule for students, we will, a great example of that is we were, my world languages, the teachers were really excited and also very nervous about moving to the semester schedule. And it kind of coupled together with our, when we adjusted our graduation requirements this year, when we required only two years of foreign language to get the advanced diploma. They were really nervous that we were going to see a decline in kids taking third-year world languages. Turns out, when kids have more space in their schedule, because we're on a block, they want to take world language. And those numbers actually went up. And so we saw a big increase in our, in our third-year world languages coming up for the, in forecasting data for the 25-26 school year. So that kind of access is what we're aiming for. And we're seeing that come to fruition. We'll be able to see greater access to CTE courses and to our courses as we, and we'll dive into this in just a little bit, but we will be able to host kids from Case and Ochsla to come take music, band, choir. We're building shuttle system that will allow easier access for that. Our kids will be able to go and take welding at Case. They'll be able to access the courses there that they are offering within their CTE programming. And so that increases our access where we are partnering together and improving our ability to do that. Also, we'll create some, there's no way we can, we would love to have a perfect schedule that aligns to CCC so more kids could take courses at CCC, but their courses vary all over the place. But the semester schedule will create a moderately better alignment to the systems at CCC. So we'll be able to see that in a.
I have a question before you move on.
Yeah.
Will the kids be able to access this year right away or is this future, like next year's schedule? Like, I want to take welding and I, Oregon City student, and I forecast, were they able to?
We're building that in for the coming school year, 25-26 school year.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yep. All right, you can move forward for me. So let's, how did we get here? As soon as we made the decision to move to the semester schedule, we put together a bell schedule committee. I went to all my departments and said, if you send a rep, can be the department leader, it can be somebody else. And we had representation from six different departments took part, along with myself. And Mike Stead was a part, mostly virtually, and giving input and so forth, but he was actively a part of it as well. We reviewed staff input from, and student input from surveys from, we did a lot of work around considering the bell schedule during the 23-24 school year. We chose not to move at that point, but we had a lot of input and a lot of data around what that meant. So we were able to use that. And we also, the bell schedule committee gathered a whole lot of, block schedules are everywhere. It's the most common schedule that you see in Oregon, really, in the Portland metro area. And so we had a look at a lot of different models. We identified some priorities and challenges that were before us. You can, you can see the list of priorities. We wanted to see, one of the priorities was seeing kids three times a week. Some block schedules, depending on how they're built, you might see kids or a class only two times a week. And so we wanted to create something where on a typical week, you had a class three times so that it increases the touches and the connection and the relationships within the classroom. We want students to know what's coming and how it works. We wanted rotations that keep the A and B days aligned so that we're having a consistent number and a consistent pattern that takes place. We were hoping to create a schedule that would allow us a six-minute passing time. I think that may or may not have come before the board before with kids can't get around the building in time. So we're squishing in a minute. The schedule allows us to do that. So we have just a little more space for kids to get to a classroom, use the restroom, so forth. Aligns, aligning to CCC as best we can and supporting alignment with Case and Ochsla so that we were, those were the priorities. Challenges, how do we navigate an advisory time and early release day? Those are, that created a unique challenge. And the solution created a longer advisory time, which we'll talk a little bit about. Calendar, aligning a calendar and a bell schedule, which is kind of a bigger concept. And I think we're really getting there as our calendar came out, for the 25-26 year, it's going to align better. We wanted to make sure that the early bird classes are consistent. And we did a lot of work with, a lot of work, but we did work with that group of teachers and said, how do we want to make this work for you all so that they're getting the right consistent amount of time? And built out, we could have looked at three, four, or five days a week. And so we landed on the four-day-a-week model. I think that's where we landed now. I'm sketchy on what we decided. I have it written down. Part-time teachers, part-time students, those are all challenges within a, as we adjust. So things we needed to navigate. So here's where we landed with the bell schedule concept. This is just a real simple, no minutes, no anything, but Monday's a full day, all eight classes. And run through a full day with the idea of it's a shorter 42-minute period and the idea, what many of us probably went to school, well, I don't know, some of you are younger than I am, but when I was in school, there was a seven, eight-period day. That's what was ran often and you had 42, 45-minute periods. And so it's what that looks like. And the concept here is being able to set intentions for the week for the teacher. Build, here's what's coming. Could be an input session. It could be an opportunity to, let's, here's, here's what the lab is going to be coming up. We're going to do some practice work. We're going to, we're going to be ready for the lab tomorrow or the lab on Thursday, that kind of idea. And so then moving into Tuesday and Wednesday, these are the days where we would have slightly shorter block scheduled. These are 72-minute periods, same time as what we have right now in a five-period day, 72-minute periods. Those are shorter because we have early release on Wednesday, 60 minutes. And then to keep the two periods the same, the two days, A and B, on Tuesday and Wednesday, the same minutes, we needed to extend our advisory to a 60-minute advisory period. Okay? And so that's, when we named one of the challenges, that's one of the challenges is advisory for 60 minutes. And so we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that just a little bit. But, so the Tuesday, Wednesday, 72 minutes, Thursday, Friday, then would be 90-minute blocks, typical block period. So we would be seeing kids three times a week, classes three times a week. Mondays are full, Tuesdays, Thursdays are A days, Wednesdays and Fridays are B days. Okay? So that's kind of the big concept if you move forward one. I overlaid some colors on this to show how we developed the shuttle. So we will do the shuttle that would run between Case and Ochsla and Oregon City High School. So kids would be able to, we had to do a lot of work with transportation on this and figuring out the minutes and details of when buses can run. We had originally thought we could do it every day, but we ran into, on the full day between sixth and seventh period, that's the same time as the elementary schools get out. So there aren't any. out, so there aren't any buses available. So that, we kind of got pulled off the table, so we, what if we only do it on, on the A-days? And in the morning on Mondays. So there, the, the blue chunk would be a morning shuttle, where a kid that wanted to take welding at Case would get on a shuttle, go down for first-period welding, and then take a second-period class at, at, at Case. So they would take two, two periods there, could be a health class. Turns out, we all have to teach a health class, you know, something like that. And then they would shuttle in, on A-days for first and second period. And then third and fourth, you can see how it aligns with the color coding.
And that would include, I mean, you just gave an example of someone from your school, but someone from Case wanted to.
Yes.
For choir.
They're going to come up for choir, they might come up for an accounting class, some of our CTE courses that have more space in them. Unfortunately, we couldn't open it up for our culinary, because we don't have enough culinary for the kids that we have, you know? So that kind of, yep.
So would that, it takes longer than six minutes to get from?
Yep.
So is that at lunchtime to break there?
In the middle would be that lunch, yep, in between second and.
A little bit of that lunch, but which is, okay.
Yep, so we're, we've designed that. We know that on the Monday, there's going to be some gap, and we'll just have to do some clear communications with what that looks like. Case and Oxlade actually start just a little, they're about 15 minutes after us, and so we will, you know, Mike's been great, working with him on this, because they're able to be a little more flexible with, with the smaller school, fewer kids, so they're, they're making some adjustments for, for our scheduling, so. Yep. Does that make sense? Did I answer your question? Okay. All right, let's roll. This is a really ugly, I know you can't read it, and it's something, these are the details of the minutes, what the bell schedule will, will look like. I'm not at all satisfied with this graphic of the schedule, there's a lot better ways to do it. This was one that, it was similar to one that we were using, so when we first put the minutes together, we used a bell schedule that was commonly seen, but we need to develop a better graphic of this that will look simpler and cleaner. There's better ways to do it, but it, it shows you the actual minutes that we will have, the, the courses with the six-minute passing and so forth.
I just want you to know that when I got to this, when I was preparing, I thought to myself, wow, I don't envy Greg. His work at all.
Thank you. There's a better way to represent it, I know that, I've, I've seen them, we just went with a, yeah, yep.
A question on that, just, the one we're going to get an email about is that late lunch at?
You want to move to the next slide for me, Caitlin?
Twenty-four. Because I know.
Do you, do you mean you want to ask about late lunch?
Yes, I do. Because the guys at work get hungry.
Yeah, so the latest lunch we would have is at 1:24. And the other ones are just a little bit stacked up a little bit earlier than that. And is that late for most people to have lunch? Yeah. Is it really common across the metro area? Yeah, it is. And, and, you know, I spent nine years in a 1:30 lunchtime for second lunch with, with kids. And, you know, it, it takes some pre-planning with kids, it takes teacher flexibility with snack time during third period or second period. You know, teenagers are always hungry, and, and so having, having snacks available and, you know, and allowing them to have snacks in class, that's something that, you know, most teachers are doing that now. If we're not there, we're going to need to have some, some times. You know, there are some classes that it's really challenging to have snacks in, like, if you're taking a chemistry class during the third period, might not, you know, during the actual lab time, we might say, no, you can't, you know, eat your granola bar while you're, you know, doing stuff with, I don't know what chemicals they use, but I don't think, anyways, could they have snacks while they're looking at their, you know, setup for the lab right before it starts? Probably, you know? So helping find ways for kids to snack and, and, and do that when they're, when they're getting hungry is going to be important. The long advisory is another big question, like 60 minutes. One of the things we are doing to tackle that, we've got an advisory committee. I've established a period of buyout for one of my teachers to facilitate advisory and what that's going to be looking like, because it takes somebody to organize it really well. And, 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 and so we're looking at, how can we use those chunks of time to better serve students? One of the things we're hoping to do, and you heard Tiffany allude to it earlier tonight, is, is having, being able to build in some club time during that longer advisory, so, you know, the, a challenge turns out to potentially be a benefit for us, could be with, if, if this rolls right, being able to have a, you know, a monthly club activity day. We hear a lot from teachers that, that need access time with kids, and so that's one of the things that the advisory will, group will be charged with, is establishing at least once a month, a access time for a kid that needs to do a makeup test, or, or, you know, 20 kids that need to get some extra on that chemistry lab, you know, that kind of stuff. So creating access time and using the time for our career and college readiness credit. There's a lot of activities and work that kids will be doing in Naviance, and so they'll be able to access, we'll, we'll be able to use that time to facilitate Naviance activities for the college and career, or higher education career-related learning credit, so utilizing it for, for those kinds of activities. So that's, that's happening. We've got a plan for how to best use that 60 minutes, so that it's effectively used. And then just finally, the daily flow. We, we are, just met with the bell schedule committee last week to do a, we, we were able to take the, our, our year calendar, and, you know, we've got, can you back up to the, the one that had the bell schedule? Yeah, that one's fine, that one's fine, too. So when we don't have school Monday, what do we do? You know? And so that's an easy week where we, we just don't have a full day that week, and we go straight into A, B, A, B. The challenge is a little bit harder if we don't have school on Friday. What does that look like? And so our, our, our committee debated, there was lots of ways to look at it, and, and ways to parse it out, as what we will, as what we're looking at doing is having, just kind of backing all the days up. And so the A, the A and B on Monday, we take the full out again, and put two 90-minute A-days, or A and B days on Monday and Tuesday, and then 72-minute, because 72 has to stay on Wednesday because of early release, we can't move that around. And then the advisory access period would be on the Thursday of that week, so 72 minutes on Wednesday and Thursday, no school Friday. That's how we would navigate those. So that, all that to say, it's kind of complicated, but when you lay it out, we've taken the calendar, and we'll lay it out with a year-long, here's the A-days, here's the B-days, here's the full days, so everybody knows it, it's laid out there, it'll be on the website, it'll be accessible to kids. We, it takes, you know, extra communication. Typically, if you walk into any school that's on a block schedule, you'll see a number of signs that are posted, A-day, A-day, B-day, B-day. So that kind of, that kind of pattern becomes part of the normal communication style. I think I hit some major questions that you might have anticipated or might have heard today. Anything, what else do you?
I have a question, and I've heard this, because I've been in bargaining, but for the other board members, we're changing teachers that have been in a routine for years and have their lessons planned. When I coach, I can just go to my, my bank, and I know what I'm going to do in this, Monday, Tuesday. What supports have we provided? The teachers alter their, their teaching plans?
Yep.
And time we've allotted, and maybe even compensation?
Yeah, we have done, our, our PD this year, any, any time that we've had, has been devoted to supporting teachers, how to teach in a block schedule. One of our middle school instructional coaches, Christina McGonaghy, actually was at a high school when they transitioned to a block schedule, and so she was able to provide supports, helped do some PD for our staff earlier in the year. So we've, we've had a number of PD opportunities. Our instructional coach, Amanda Ryan-Fear, has been all-access support for anybody that reaches out with models, curriculum map models and so forth. She has worked, we've provided every teacher with eight hours of either, you can, we can get you a sub for a day, or we can pay you for time that you spend extra doing, eight hours of time preparing for the semester schedule, and with, with our instructional coach supporting them as well. So that's been available through the impact bargaining. We also agreed to an additional eight hours for any teacher that has more than three identified preps for next year, because they have a little additional work, so, yeah.
So follow up with that. So my kids who are 20 and 18 years out of high school, where it can be when they switch to block. And the one thing, I just want to reiterate, that, whatever training, because the one thing they came home with was how the teachers did, I don't think they did a lot of training at the time, I think it was really new, maybe, but how the teachers didn't know how to teach in 90 minutes, or however longer it went. I think they went from 45 that same way, 45 to more like 68.
It turns out lecturing's a bad idea for 90 minutes, which lecturing's not a great idea to begin with. And so really taking a look, there, there's a time and place for short chunks of, of input, you know? Here's some information.
Yeah, 90 minutes lecture did not go well.
No, that won't. Really, the, the simple concept is, is it needs to be chunked into probably a 90-minute period, which we only have two days that are 90 minutes, but a 90-minute period should be chunked into at least three different activities, things that they are doing, where there's a transition, there's a physical movement, so that kids are up and doing something a little bit different, and changing their brain patterns in, in their thinking.
Cool. Is that, yeah, that's the one thing even coming in tonight that I was going to just mention.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Well, it depends. I mean, like, I used to have a teacher that taught English, and, you know, when she was teaching English, she brought Greek hist, Greek mythology into her English lessons and stuff, and those were fascinating classes to listen to, so it just all depends on the subject matter, I think.
True.
But I, as a proponent of this, I love block scheduling. I actually attended two different high schools when I was growing up. The first, the high school I went to was one through eight, all in a day, and then the second high school I went to was block scheduling. And I have to tell you, from one to another, I prefer block scheduling so much more, especially when you really get to, get to know the material. When you're sitting in class and you have your lecture, your standard lecture, and then you have the time in class to actually apply what you learn into actual coursework, where the teacher can help you work through each problem, and, you know, if you have any questions and things like that, it really deep dives into the education, and then I just, it, it just really made me feel like I grasped the information a lot better than having to jump every, you know, 30, 40 minutes to another class kind of thing, so, yeah.
Good, thank you.
My kids also loved it, by the way, after, after they learned, after the teachers learned how to handle the 90 minutes, yeah.
Good.
You mentioned that it would be, the information would be online. Other than that, right, as a parent, what, how can I get information around my son, like, when his schedule comes out, and then that's how that looks for him? Obviously, he didn't forecast for classes in other schools or anything like that, so.
They did have opportunity. We had a lot of, a lot of our forecasting materials, presentations for each grade level, had opportunities where we pointed out what courses kids could take, and, and so there was a fair amount of information. Sometimes it doesn't always get out to where it needs to be, and, and that's one of those things that we will continue to learn and spread as, as, as the systems develop.
Because last year, the Pioneer Welcome Night wasn't until several weeks into this school year, so is that still the same plan, that that's when you would have the opportunity for parents to come and, and families to learn a little bit more about the classes, or?
So we do two, two big nights. One is the Pioneer Welcome Night, that happens in September, that's kind of an open house. And then we do the Academic Planning Night, which takes place in either January, February, and that's the night where we invite everybody in, and here's course offerings, and lots of questions, and, and information like that.
Sure, yeah, and that, the one in February is great. The, the one in September, I've got lots, I've got a number of individuals who've got feedback that it's difficult for students to start and have questions and not have an opportunity beforehand to get in and have them, especially with the change in schedule. It seems like it would be opportune to have a chance before school started if parents or students had questions, that they could get some feedback and get those questions answered.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So a pre, you're wondering if there's a possibility for a pre, before school starts kind of thing? Gotcha. Good, thank you.
Since we've already done the forecasting, do you have any data on, like, how many kids took the opportunity to, to cross?
Yeah, we have.
Try to go to different campuses, or?
We are about, I think our number is around, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think we're around 100, 120 kids at Oregon City High School that have forecasted for courses at Case. I don't know the numbers from Case coming up, sorry.
Yeah, and I, I think JROTC is one of the classes that a number of students at Case were pretty excited about, and so part of what we've done, too, is really made sure they have the materials, so not just the PD, but the materials also that you might need. For example, in science, they're going to have more teachers at any given time teaching biology, so they can't share materials as well. So we made sure to think those things through, the department leaders did those with the departments, and, and helped with that. And the reason I bring it up is because Major Thomas had to get more uniforms, because he has had some forecasted more kids to be under RRC. Does that make sense?
Last piece, next year will be some time, our department leader team will be reviewing how the change is going, how the schedule is working. I got a lot of feedback as we were, if you were part of impact bargaining, when Oregon City High School went to the trimester, it, it happened, and there was never any opportunity for, like, how's it going? Do we want to keep doing it? Can it be refined? And so that'll be something that we do throughout next year, perhaps beyond, but for sure, next year, we'll, you know, what, what's going well, what are the hiccups, what are the things that we need to tackle, does the, you know, are the, is the way we designed it working the way we want it? So trying to get that kind of feedback, yeah.
Just for anyone who's listening, or any parents sort of worried, the other thing, and I don't know if you found this, Debbie, but the other thing that my kids loved was the fact that they had a day in between classes, so they could juggle, sometimes my kids all worked, but they could juggle assignments such that it was less stressful. So I thought that was kind of an interesting thing that they came back with.
Yeah.
And, and I had some AP parents that were a little concerned about homework, like, getting it piled on, and then, like, oh, you have two, two nights to get this done, so we're going to load you up. So is there, has there been some discussion about homework assignments in this new schedule?
We, we haven't yet, but that's on the, on the docket as we head into, as we start up in the fall, for thinking about how are we, you know, doing our homework. It shouldn't be doubling up because of that. We need to give consistent amounts, knowing that kids are taking a full schedule. They shouldn't be doing, you know, I don't know if our, I don't think our district, I don't think we haven't identified, like, you should have an hour of homework or two hours of homework a night, but there, there needs to be a reasonable amount of homework time, and, and it can't be all absorbed by one class or two classes, so we need to be creating some consistency there.
And my kids were AP, they all took AP classes, and they, again, found that it was much more balanced for them.
That was a long time ago, but it's still.
My, my last question, are we going to have, what kind of supports for the kids? Because whenever we change something, we haven't talked, talked about teachers and parents, but what about kids? So any extra support is going to be there the first couple of weeks to get these kids acquainted with the schedule?
Yes, the first, the first two days for ninth graders and for all of our kids, we will be running through all eight periods. Those will be both full days of, of time, and then, you know, as we're introducing, and it's going to be a lot of, here's how it's going to be working, because we're going to have to teach all 1,900 kids next year how it works. It's not just the freshman class, so we're going to have to, have to be very deliberate with our communication to the, to the kids about what it's, what it's looking. the kids about what it's, what it's looking like and how it's going to roll.
I lied, I had one more question.
Shocking.
We have a ton of days off. That, we don't have five days of school every week. How did we make adjustments in our? Did you talk about that, or I was daydreaming?
You and, you and Justin were making Google ads.
Okay, never mind, I'll watch the video.
We did talk about it. We take the full days off usually.
Okay, you take the full days off.
And then, and then either if, if it's a no school Monday, that's easy, you just take the full day off.
That's what you're talking about.
There we go.
Have you taken, have you taken in consideration, like the students that have to leave early at the end of the day that, for sports and things like that? Because there are times that some students need to leave. And unfortunately, you know, they're opposite days and they would be missing part of the same class over and over.
That, that happens no matter what. And, and it's just something you just have to tackle. And if you're, you know, an athlete that's, that's releasing early, then your job is to stay connected to your teacher. And, and perhaps that's what some of those access times could be, could support when we're having the access time during advisory, that could be a potential support for that.
Now it's my turn to say, I also had a block schedule after two high schools and I was a sport, an athlete, and, I mean, it works out.
That's all I got.
Any other questions? No. I, I just really want to say thank you to Greg and to Mike and to Sarah for doing this together, working as a team and getting through some really, some things that were like, oh my gosh, when the shuttle, that's messing up everything. And then we'd come back together or they'd come back together and, you know, they kept Sabrina in the loop and the lunch thing impacted nutrition and that got worked out. And it just, over and over again, it's like this little thing, ooh, this little thing. And Greg is very skilled at bringing teams together. And so you can tell that there's been teams and committees who've looked at these things. And I think it'll go as well as it can go. When you do something new, it'll be a little bumpy and we'll make some plans for how we want to change things in the future and, and the, the teams will be a part of that. So I don't anticipate it will be perfect, but it's super exciting. And Greg's going to say it's perfect, but it's exciting. And they've worked really, really hard to get what we think is going to be great for kids.
And I just have to chime in with the nerd side. So if you look at the research around scheduling for high school, there is no perfect schedule, but what makes a difference is relationships. That is the factor. So if you're in a smaller school, it really doesn't matter. You can do eight periods, four, whatever, because everybody knows each other. But as the school gets bigger, a block schedule has more research behind it because those relationships stay over the course of the year.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
My, my counseling team is very excited about this. I was just meeting with one of my new counselors this year who has worked on a semester schedule in her prior professional life and came to the trimester. And it, it was just so evident to, to her in the, in the trimester, you, you just can't create the flow of a schedule for a kid. And, because they, it changes, because of what I was talking about earlier, where they have integrated one, A and B, third try and all that stuff. And every trimester, they're figuring out the schedules for kids to make it fit. And it's really hard to create that year-long flow for a kid. When we build a semester schedule in, in our software, it, it allows us to build second period for this group of kids and that teacher all year for that same class. So it'll, it won't be 100% that, but it'll be much higher, very consistent where that, the tumultuous first week of the trimester, at the beginning of a semester, it's, I mean, there's some like adjustments that need to be made and some things, but it's nothing like the tumultuous changes that happen in a trimester.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And a reminder to Chair that the internet turns off in nine minutes.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna power through. We next have our consent agenda. For folks tuning in, this is just routine items the board has reviewed in advance and we approve together. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Chair, I will move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Great. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Aye.
Yes.
He's ready to go. He is ready to go.
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Hopper?
Aye.
Director Neese?
Aye.
Director Canciola?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much. Moving on to our action items, we have, our first action item is approve SEDEXO contract renewal for the 2025-26 fiscal year. We discussed that earlier, but do you have anything else to add, Michael?
Yep, so just really quickly, if you looked at the resolution, I did add some more details for you to look at. So it would be an increase this year of 3.4% of the fixed costs for the meal pattern equivalents. And allowable CPI increase was 3.8, so you need to know that each year. And then those, allowable cost, which is in the resolution that below, is $2.43. And you also have that budget outline, so each year they have to supply that to you because the goal is to keep the cost neutral.
In our case, if I might clarify, that cost is only for second meals or meal for people coming in, right? Or is it what they, what they get reimbursed for?
Yes. And remember, it's no cost to the public. Everything is, has a cost. So we pay for it all and we get reimbursed by the state. So the only a portion of it is really reimbursed. And so we're, we work really hard to make sure that we can cover everything, but it's really based off still our free and reduced lunch, not applications, but it's directly certified through the state, through like census and different things like that. So it is kind, it's still on the back end, it's still all the same.
Right.
It's just on the front end, people don't have to fill out the forms and then everyone is eligible. So, but on the other end, we still have to do all the claims every month. They bill us for every single meal. Every meal has to be a complete meal in order for it to be claimed. So there is still, all of the regulations are still the same.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Great. Any other thoughts or questions? Is there a motion?
Chair, I motion to pass Resolution 2425-235, motion to approve the SEDEXO contract renewal for the 2025-26 fiscal year.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Hopper?
Aye.
Director Canciola?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Neese?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to approve the 2027-28 Oregon City School District calendar. I said, did you have anything to add?
Just that, that's the, kind of the shell of the calendar. We try to get them at least three years out, knowing that the detailed calendar is something that comes right the year before.
Fantastic, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2027-2028 Oregon City School District calendar.
I'll second.
Fantastic. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director White?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Canciola?
Aye.
Director Neese?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Hopper?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Lastly, we have approve athletics fee schedule for 2025-26 school year.
Yes, so that is attached?
That is attached and it is the same as last year. Last year, we saw an increase and we hadn't had one for a while. Trinity compares with others in our league to make sure that we are in the, in the range. Different school districts do different things, but also wants to, want to make sure it's accessible to our kids and families. So the proposal is no change for one more year, at least.
Great. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the athletics fee schedule for the 2025-26 school year.
Any further discussion, questions? Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Hopper?
Aye.
Director Neese?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Canciola?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, we did postpone the surveying contract conversation. So moving on to board member comments, we have three minutes. Everyone can get a truncated version of whatever they were going to say. We'll start with you, Director Hopper.
All right.
Deb, you get extra time.
It's the end of the school year, which is very exciting, especially exciting for me as we go into the new school year. And I'm going to have a kindergartner, so then I've got, but 18 or 13 more years in the district, which is a long time. I want to say thank you to Michael Sweeten. It has been a real pleasure working with you and getting to know you, and I wish you the best of luck. And I want to say thank you and good luck to Director Hayes. When I first joined the board, I think both of us did not, we disagreed on a lot of things. And it has been a testament to how much she loves kids and how much she wants to work for kids, that we've been able to get along and make such good progress here. So I'm grateful for that and I thank you and I wish you the best.
Thank you. I just want to quickly congratulate Michelle on winning her seat on the board. I know it was a hard battle. I know that there was a lot of challenges along the way, a lot of lies, a lot of tormenting and a lot of harassment, but I just wanted to say congratulations. And for all the people that don't know Michelle, it's really funny, one of my best friends lives across the street from me. And when I brought up her name, I was running with her four years ago, they're like, oh my God, I love Michelle. And every time I ever bring up her name, it, everybody always says that. And their, their kids are 24 and 22. And that tells it right there how long she's been a member of this community that love kids. And I really, really do appreciate everything you've done.
Okay, so briefly, again, wrapping up May, I did the Passages Presentations, again, Tom Water, which is my absolute favorite. Whoever started that thing, I love that. Those, those kids, watching them blossom and bloom and share, and we get to cheer them on, I love that. So I went from that into the Family Forum, Transitions Night at Tom Water. And I had kids come up and say, I know you. And I was like, how? So going along our whole theme tonight of connecting, I had multiple students come up and say, you did my assembly. I said, I did do your assembly. And then they bring their parents back and the parents are asking more questions and the parents are thanking me for being so real and giving them the opportunity to talk to their students about drug prevention, drug education and fentanyl awareness. And so one guy came over and he's like, I know you. And I said, oh, were you at the Tom Water Gardner Assembly? And he goes, I'm in high school. Sorry. So you saw the video? Yes, I saw the video. So again, all these little connections that I am now making and I am now a part of these kids that are recognizing me being vulnerable with them. So leading into that, again, I am humbled and I am grateful that I get to serve another four years to continue building upon the connections that I've been making with all of these students, not just my daycare kids, but, and then continuing this on and making it bigger for our community. And then it was an honor to do graduation and hugging my niece on stage. So I've had nieces and nephews four years in a row. And then I loved being at OXLA this year. OXLA was a very humbling experience because watching each teacher take a minute and talk about each student. And there was a lot of tears, like I was getting pretty choked up at OXLA in the valedictorian speech. And then Opal's, her poem at the end, I was like, I was not prepared to be this emotional on these beautiful students. But it was neat. It was a nice aid and helped them clean up and I got flowers for it. So I'm, I'm grateful, looking forward to a great summer and hitting the ground running.
I was able to take advantage of the opportunities for the board members to go to the different schools. So went to JME and got to drop off the banyan tree that they gave us last year, so I got added. And yes, they have big plans on what they would love to do to their school, so we'll, we'll see. Case, Case is doing such great work with not the best conditions. They are making these beautiful toolboxes in a wood shop that's a hallway. So, you know, kudos to what they're making happen in, in that, at that school. Yeah, Transitions Night was great. That was the fifth graders coming into the middle school, eighth graders going into high school. And a number of parents and families just mentioned, like, oh, that took some of the stress out. There's friendly people here. This is going to be okay. So great opportunity for families to take part in that. And then I had mentioned, people at graduation, the kiddos that walked across the stage from Springwater were kindergartners when I started there. So that was really special to get to see them do. And the great things they're going on to do, so. And best of luck to everyone and to you, Debbie.
So just a couple of things for me. Michael, it has been a privilege to work with you the last six years. I just, we will miss your kindness, your grace and your extreme professionalism. So best of luck to you. And lucky them and we're, and lucky you, but we're, it, one of my kids at school recently put together the concept of bittersweet and this is bittersweet. So thank you so much. It's been a pleasure. And Deb, despite everything, I wish you very mu, very much well.
All right. Obviously, congratulations to all our classes, classes 2025. Did not get to go to any of them. I'll make it up next year, maybe hit them all. There was two pioneers getting married this weekend and I had to be there because one of them was mine, so it was Pioneer wedding. There's, it was like Oregon City was all in silver tones, fantastic. Let's see. Went down to a town hall. Senator Meek was having a town hall in Gladstone, so slept in that day because it was my birthday and I'm a weirdo and I wanted to advocate for kids and the budget, because we just passed it. I want to make sure he knew that it is stressful, that we're planning our budget without them getting their act together and planning, getting theirs done. And we talked a little bit about that and make sure we don't go down any further. And then David, from the Budget Committee was there also. We talked to Mark, asked questions about the 11% for the specialized funding. And if that doesn't get brought up in the next one, Mark's going to personally bring it out of his, one of his committees. So that was good to hear him talk about that and have a heart for kids. So look forward to going to more legislative events down the road. Congratulations to Michelle and myself. I had a hard race, so. I look forward to working with you and myself for the next four years. So.
Will you work with us too?
Yes, and everybody else on the board as well. I mean, yeah, so. It's been a long week, whatever. So was at the track meet, of course, it was already mentioned, but there was Colin Smith, took second in the 400 and three in the 200, ran the short relay and he's only a sophomore. His time in the prelims would have been the state meet, he would have been the champion if he ran that same time. He had a long day running all those races, the 200, the 400, the pre, you know, multiple races. And then also he, Keaton Moore got hurt and they, they were in the long, long relay hunt. They took ninth, but Colin had to anchor that Smith and that was a gutsy performance. He ran like a 48, the anchor leg, which is fantastic for a sophomore. We're going to have state champion, he's going to be a state champion and be fantastic. Maybe see him down in Olympics someday. I think that's all I got. I think I went to Candy Lane, but I don't know if this is between now and then. Did we go to Candy Lane?
We did go to Candy Lane.
Was that the last meeting?
You write off.
Am I in the, am I in the cycle? Oh, yes, it did aboard me. I went to Candy Lane and got to look at the school with.
He did a fantastic job of assessing the roof situation.
Yeah, the roof situation, yes, and all that stuff. Yeah, the roof situation, yes, and all that stuff. So it needs a lot of love and it was good to go back to where I started school at, so. And, oh, Michael, sorry. Michael, thank you for being inclusive and I got to go down to a conference with you about security and safety and I was like, oh my gosh, I'm going with a bunch of people from school and I'm the evil board person and you made me feel right at home. And we attended all the conferences, we sat, we collaborated, got to know, who's our, loss prevent, Gina, yes, sorry Gina. And it was fantastic conference and I hope you take that to your new school because security's every day, every minute, every hour, every second. And I think our other board members should go to that someday and it's, that was, that was a good conference. I've been to a lot and I appreciate you including me in that and we ate dinner and we talked and just had a good time and it was about kids and kids' safety. So that's one of my big things, kid's safety. So thank you, Michael, and your work over the years here. Good luck in San Barlo. And San Barlo Gresham?
Gresham Barlow.
Gresham Barlow, okay. Gresham Barlow District. And I'm done.
Okay.
Do you have any more questions for Freddie?
I didn't start, you guys did.
Okay, well, we've touched on a lot of the things, graduations, congratulations to